All right, I have 5:30. It is Tuesday, July 20th, and we have a study session on the agenda with two items, I believe. One is the Allen-Hutto Memorial Commons Use Policy, and the second is alcohol in parks for permitted events, both being led by Parks Coordinator Black. So you have the floor.
Good evening, members of council. So since we have a lot to get through during this study session, I've provided a bit of a roadmap. So we will briefly review the changes to the Allen-Hutto Memorial Commons Use Policy. I am going to give a brief update in between the two items on the agenda with some Parks Code changes that council had suggested during the first discussion of the Allen-Hutto policy. And then hopefully the bulk of the discussion can be about alcohol in parks related to permitted events, since that's where we're really in need of council input. So for the Allen-Hutto Memorial Commons Use Policy, the final draft is included in your packets. It has now been reviewed by PTRC, the Art Commission, and council. So based on feedback from all three bodies, the only changes to the policy have been to shift the cutoff time for events to 9:00 p.m. rather than 8:00 p.m. There was universal agreement amongst the three bodies on that. And to reference the municipal code regarding temporary lighting. So the rules for lighting are incorporated now, along with sound. We had just missed adding lighting during the first draft. So those were the only changes between the draft version that you saw initially and this final version. Based on the discussion about the draft policy, park staff and code enforcement staff did go out to the commons and we conducted decibel level testing. We let both the adjacent neighbors know that that was going on, and both were able to make it during that testing, which was great. They stood with us and looked at the decibel readings. So we tested the speakers at a reasonable volume so that the back row of the amphitheater was able to hear. And the measurements for that did not exceed the regularly permitted 60 decibel limit that's in the code for O2 zoning. So based on that result, we've concluded that the 60 decibel limit that's in the code already is a very workable number for special events to comply with, and no changes are necessary to the code as it pertains to events in open space zoning. So the final concern about the Commons Use Policy brought up at council was making sure that the space and the neighbors aren't overwhelmed by the frequency of events that might go on each year. What we're recommending at this time is to continue to monitor on an ongoing basis the requests that we're getting. But at this time, we haven't gotten any requests for use of the space besides the fifth grade continuation ceremony that took place in May. So what we're recommending now is to see how the community is using the space before we try to put limits on it, because we're not sure if we'll need evenings or afternoons or what the appropriate parameters are going to be. So we'll keep monitoring that and determine what's necessary as we see how the space really is used. So that concludes all the information I have about the use policy. So before I move on, are council members comfortable with that policy? Are there any questions on it?
Go over your example of decibel. Again, back row, was that a microphone? What was that?
Yeah, so we set up our two, we have two large speakers that are about this high that we use for special events. So we set those up at the stage as you would for an event, and played AC/DC and Eric Church through the speakers to try and get a sense of, like, even if you had drums or, like, rock music or something loud, that was going to reach the back. So we stood, we had some staff standing on the back row to make sure it was like that reasonable level, like, can I hear the, like, if it was a spoken word, something? And then I was standing with code enforcement and the neighbors at the property line of the Klein's, and Alice Abrams was on her roof. So the measurement at that reasonable volume was below at the property line, that 60 decibel limit. So we were very comfortable with the fact that you can have amplified sound in that space that's loud enough to be heard, even if you're sitting in the back row, without it being so loud it's creating a nuisance or going over that limit. That's pretty much the summary.
I had a question about the times. And it's helpful to know that, you know, the various groups discussed it and kind of unanimously agreed. But I believe, it's been a while, I thought I recalled that we were talking specifically about movie night. And, you know, movie night can't start until almost nine o'clock.
Yes.
And so I'm, we're excluding that from ever being held there.
Yes. I do think we do have some leeway for city events, and we've also discussed having movie night on that side. At this time, we're planning to keep movie night on this side for a few different reasons. The biggest of which is to not have, we would close the road either way, but just to not have people crossing back and forth over the road at night with little kids. We also have a sloping lawn on this side, so we, for this year, we're planning to have it on this side, because a lot of the logistics.
Yeah, and I knew that that was the plan for this year. I just was thinking, you know, long-term, we can't have any events like that. Anything that requires it to be dark.
Yes.
Which would be, you know, a lot of theater, a lot of, a lot of anything would require, might require darkness.
Yes.
And I just, I guess, you know, I would prefer to have the ability to have movie night there, but what, so you mentioned that there might be some leeway for city events. Where do you think that comes from?
Um.
As I look at Kathy.
As I'm, yeah, as I look at the city manager, if we could, I am trying to remember back to our general city property usage policy. I believe that there is a section, I'm sorry, I'm putting Kathy so on the spot. I believe there's a section, our general city property usage policy for city properties that we are not subject to all of our own permitting requirements.
Okay.
Partially so that city departments don't have to go through a permitting process. But off the, I would have to look at the policy, which I don't have in front of me.
Well, that's all I have on the policy, so does council have any more questions?
Do you want, I mean, just as a general comment, to try and set up and break down in half an hour is, that's a big challenge, depending upon the event. So, just feedback, might bump that.
It seems to me that we had a discussion a while back, and you can help me if my memory has, I hit a speed bump again, but the, we kind of moved from hours, you know, such-and-such o'clock to sundown in, with respect to parks, some of that, some of the limitations. And I wonder if that would be appropriate in this situation. Not necessarily, it could be an hour before the published sunset or something like that, but, but, you know, kind of acknowledging that all days are not created equal, you know? So that's one for you to think about. I'm looking at the application form, and on the music, you know, in the spirit of clarity and communication, if we want to have 60 decibels or less at the perimeter, rather than say, you know, reasonable, maybe we should just to say, maybe we should be clear and say not to exceed 60 decibels at the property lines, or something along those lines. Again, just a thought to consider. And the setup and the cleanup times, I mean, I agree with Mike's comment, and I also think that we should clearly fix the responsibility in this document, like, you know, we're not cleaning up after you. You need to be, make accommodations to, to clean up, leave it the way you found it. Or so, but, you know, whatever words one chooses, I think that we could be a little more firm or clear on that as well. But yeah, good stuff, and it sounds like we've got a lot of support. That's, that's all I have.
Any other comments?
Emily, didn't PTRC weigh in on the sunup to sundown?
I was just about to say, so my next slide, my little Parks Code change update was addressing that, let me jump to it here.
Okay.
Is addressing that hours change, because that's one thing that came up during the council, the first council discussion about the use policy, that was a little bit broader than the use policy itself. So council had suggested considering changing park hours from the existing 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. to dawn to dusk. So PTRC is working on a couple other parks-related changes to the code right now that will be coming to council likely in September. So I presented this question to them at their May meeting. PTRC was strongly against changing the rules from, to dawn to dusk. So they were considering people, you know, wanting to get up early in the morning and, you know, train for a marathon on the trails, or people that worked until late at night and wanted to go for a walk, or even just in the middle of winter, wanting to be able to go for a walk at like 6:00 p.m. and not worry about, is it an hour after the sun has gone down? I don't know. So they did weigh in on this issue, and I can bring council more information with other code changes in September, but at this time, they were not in favor of that change.
I'd add one thing on that, that I would be against it to on trails, but I think parks are different. I think that trails could be fine, I think you can walk after time, but I just don't, I think for our, for enforcement and for other reasons, that dawn to dusk makes sense for the parks that we have. I'm not sure why people would be there without a permit in, after, after dawn or dusk. That was my, in my view. So yeah, I didn't, I agree with them on trails.
I would say maybe except for the winter, though, when it's dark at five.
I think then some of the stickiness comes in where you're on a trail through a park would.
Yeah, well.
Be the only consideration, but I can bring that, that suggestion to PTRC, too, and see what their thoughts are on that, because they were focused mainly on trails and didn't really talk about.
Right, and I can see, I get that entirely. I mean, that's, I just don't know, you know, if you're in the park after dark, what's you up to no good? I don't know.
Question for Commander. Have you had problems, I mean, as you listen to this, what do you think?
Well, as you all know, we've, we've got homeless people that are showing up out here. We've had some contacts in the park the last several months. We're getting them on Hampton Avenue, so they're out and about, they've moved this way unfortunately. We're keeping a pretty good lid on it overall and addressing it. My personal opinion, I like the dawn to dusk, because there's nobody needs to be out there or gonna, it should be out there at around 11:00 o'clock at night. I understand the time change that comes up here in the, in the fall, but if you would ask me, I think the dawn to dusk is the way to go on this.
Do you know what other municipalities do?
Not right, and right off the top of my head, I can certainly research reporting, get back with you, but I'm not sure what they're, what they're doing.
Greenwood does dawn to dusk.
Emily, one comment, and I guess one question or clarification. In light of the next item on the study session agenda, alcohol permitted in the parks, if we look at the use policy that we're talking about right now for Allen-Hutto, number five talks about no alcohol permitted in any city parks. Assuming that we adopt the next item, should we revise the use policy now to, in the document we're talking about now, to reflect that no alcohol permitted in any certain city parks except as otherwise permitted within the city? Because we're about to, we're about to talk about allowing it in that park, correct?
Yes.
As our next agenda item, I think we need to amend number five the way it's written here on page one of our use policy.
I, so this is a really simple document to change administratively. We just get Chris's signature on it. So I would ask that council adopt it the way it is now, so that we have something in place for Allen-Hutto, since right now we don't have anything.
But aren't we about to do it in the next few minutes?
No, this is, this is study session.
That's gonna come back.
Yeah, and we need to.
That's not something we do at study session, adopting the alcohol policy?
No.
Okay.
No, so we would need to, we need to bring that back to PTRC based on your discussion, and then draft some code language.
Got it, sorry. I misunderstood the process, that's fine, okay.
I like wanting to be efficient, though.
Okay.
It was a good thought.
My question, my, my other question, a little unrelated to that, though, regarding this slide that's up now, it almost, to me, it just popped into my head, we're talking about other park-related code changes, being currently it's from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. To me, what rings into my head immediately is our lighting at our clubs. That is currently at 11:00 p.m., unless otherwise noted in specific development agreements with our clubs. We're not talking about specifically changing that as a result of this change that we're talking about going dawn to dusk, are we?
No.
No lighting would be impacted by what we're talking about changing here, just park hours of operation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I'll follow up on that, though, too, that the lighting, number seven here, says must conform to Charles Village Municipal Code standards for exterior lighting. Those are pretty restrictive. I mean, we have a dark sky policy. So I'm not sure, but I do know that we have a process to request temporary lighting, right? Is that, is that what you're thinking of, of every, of coming through that process to get temporary lighting?
It was more going off the nuisance section in chapter 10, so it's lighting spilling on to adjacent properties. So it's addressing the fact that that way someone shouldn't be setting up like a floodlight in Allen-Hutto that's directly into the neighbor's bedroom for three hours or something like that. And we'd be able to address it in that nuisance section of chapter 10.
But just, just to clarify that, there's certainly nothing that in any kind of, you know, permit that they would require, that we would require, we could certainly request and review that information to ensure the compatibility with the code.
So again, do, are we, are we exempt from that? Not that we would want, I mean, I just keep going back to movie night, right? Like, I don't know whether that screen would be bright enough to spill over into somebody's property, probably not, but I don't want to tie our own hands. Like, that's a great community event, and we, you know, I understand the reasons for wanting it to do it here, but that's exactly what this kind of space is designed for.
So there are also some minor changes we have to make to that broader event policy, so we can make sure as we go through and do that, that we specifically address city events separately from these permitted events.
Kind of give us the leeway to use our own property.
Yes, to make sure that, that that's the case.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more questions about the first item, Ms. Black, if you'd like to start on the next one about alcohol.
So currently, alcohol is prohibited in all parks and trails without exception in the city. So even for permit event, permitted events or city special events, a park cannot have alcohol under the current rules. The question of changing this came up at the last council study session about use of the commons. So the issue we're discussing, just to be clear, is alcohol associated with an event, with a permit for, for an event or a special event that the city is holding. There's no suggestion on the table to change the general rules about alcohol use in parks and trails. That would continue to be generally prohibited. So we brought the question of allowing alcohol during special events and permitted events to PTRC at their May meeting, and the commission had a lot of helpful feedback for us. So the commission was in favor of allowing alcohol at permitted public and private events as well as certain city events. They did suggest limiting alcohol to John Mead Park and Allen-Hutto Memorial Commons as opposed to other parks and open spaces that we have. The main reason for that is we just don't have the facilities, you know, parking facilities, restroom facilities at our other parks and open spaces to be able to support a larger event that would probably, that would be hosting something with alcohol. They also suggested limiting alcohol to beer and wine, and then a few additional recommendations in the memo about glass in parks and things like that, that, that appear in the memo, but these are really the main things that we're looking for council feedback on, too. So we'll focus on these. So I have a list of questions that we're seeking feedback on that go from broad to more granular, but before we start on the questions, just to give you some context, this is just a study session to discuss it. If council decides to amend the code, we'll go ahead and draft language, bring that to PTRC, and then bring it to city council again for final approval. And if you don't wish to change code at this time, I will just give that update to PTRC. So does council, before we start on the questions, have questions about the existing rules or process for liquor permitting?
I'll just go down the line and have, have every council member talk just to thoughts about these questions.
My question really is, how is this going to be enforced and monitored? Ask Commander Weathers to address that. If there is alcohol, if somebody shows up with other alcohol, are we faced with a situation where there may be an abuse of alcohol in a situation like this? How does the police force look to, to monitor this?
Alcohol laws are inherently tough to enforce at times. It would be pretty much a case-by-case.
They can be inherently hard to enforce and take up a lot of time. It'd be a case-by-case basis that we'd have to deal with what would happen out there. You hope you wouldn't get the big party out of control where everybody shows up there and bringing their own bottles and stuff like that, so, like I said, we probably have to address it as, as we go.
So would this create some additional burden on the police force to enforce this and monitor this?
Yeah, in my opinion, alcohol in parks don't mix. It's a problem down in Denver. You see, you've been, you've been to the parks, I'm sure all of you have been down there, and it creates problems. It's nice if people would drink responsibly, we know that's not the case in my, in my opinion. So yes, it would, it could increase an issue that we don't have right now. Me personally, I like the no alcohol rule, but I'm, I'm very conservative, so.
Commander, just as a follow-up to that, right now, we don't allow alcohol in any of the parks. So from that perspective, that really is not a change in your enforcement, right? And that's the way it is today, and that's the way it would be under this. All that is under discussion is whether or not to allow parks for permitted events, which then have to get other, other checks and balances related to the alcohol. So if there was an event that was permitted with the alcohol, the ability for somebody to roll up with unpermitted kegs, not that that would happen, but, you know, that worst-case scenario is not going to happen, because, and if it did, there's clear enforcement for that, because it's not consistent with the permit.
Well, Chris, my, my concern is that creates an additional enforcement burden on our police department to monitor this. If we do allow, for example, just this one park, it's an additional burden on the police force to monitor that and avoid problems, because like Commander said, you know, you see situations in Denver with parks where it gets out of control, and that's something we need to avoid. So I appreciate your comments, Commander.
You're welcome. Council Sheldon.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm generally in favor of this on a permitted basis, and I, going down the list, questions for council, I guess, yes, I'm in favor of allowing this, yes, only in John Mead and Allen-Hutto, yes, only the city. I think only the city should be able to hold permitted events, not, not the public. And so that is not nonprofits necessarily, although that one I could probably be convinced on, but not, not public, which I think then would change the dynamic that Al's concerned about, I think. And then I guess, does it open, if we did allow it for anyone besides city or even city events, does it open a, a door for additional liability to our city by allowing alcohol at these events? And is it, is it something that we're concerned about at all? I know we've got immunity to a, to a certain level, I just don't, I just bring it up, I don't know if serving alcohol at events opens up the door for additional liability. While you guys talk on that, I think, I had one more thought. Oh, I know what it was, Emily. Your exhibit B, that was quite the interesting list of comps you used. Silt and Newcastle and Wheat Ridge and Mead. Just found it, I found it interesting that you were using those comps as, to find out what other cities were doing. Curious as to how you came up with those comps.
Laura, the comment was. Laura, the comment was, the other cities' alcohol policy, how did we come up with that list of cities?
There's some Western slope cities and towns on there.
Oh, I did, I did just a call out to my clerk listserv and whoever sent back their ordinances and stuff like that.
Oh, I gotcha.
I put them in the spreadsheet, I tried to look specifically at our neighbors, but...
Right.
Yeah.
Because getting our direct neighbors would obviously be a little bit more relevant than Newcastle, but, um, did we come up with anything on, on liability?
I was just gonna say, on that note, Castle Pines, just recently, they, that's maybe a community that's a little closer geographical here, they allow beer and wine in any city park there, just FYI.
Okay.
At any time.
It's, it's, it's any time.
Without any permit.
Yeah.
Without any kind of event.
So, I, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking too antiquated and maybe more like Commander Weathers, I think we tighten it up and keep the reins on it and limit it to city events, but I could probably be convinced to open it up to other events if it was, if the rest of council felt strongly, I don't feel terribly strongly about it, but did we find out anything about liability?
Well, our usage policy does require anybody that uses city facilities to provide proof of insurance and, and coverage.
Name the city as an additional insured?
I, yes. I believe that's what it says.
Okay, I have no further comments, thanks.
My comments are to, probably limited to city events, and then I'd add Quincy Farm in here as well.
It's not a park.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess technically...
Technically, it's not a park.
It's not defined as a park.
Okay.
You can write it up in your own...
Yeah, it would be a...
Well, it'd be like using this building, right? It's a city...
Okay. I, I think it's a slippery slope if you start opening it up to just the general public, I mean, you could have, you know, just think of the different, you could have family reunions here, you could have someone who owns a company, says, "I'm gonna have my company party here", and it is one slippery slope. So I think if we start with city events only and then build it from, build it from there.
Counsel Brown.
Well, clearly, I'm the drinker in the group. The, and I think you raise a very valid point, Mike, going back to when we discussed the event permitting process to begin with, we don't have to grant permits, right? We have administrative authority to just say, "No, we don't want you to use it that day, that time." Just generally, somebody says, "I wanna hold my company picnic there," and we can say, "No, sorry."
Just as long as there's no equal protection issues.
Yeah. Right, okay, so, you know, so I, I share the concern about now, all of a sudden, it's like the Wash Park Boathouse, right, which is just constantly used by certain groups, but that's Denver's choice to make it that available and accessible. We don't have to allow that frequency, we could say, "We've already had two events there that month and we're not approving anymore for no reason at all," right? Okay, yeah, okay. So, you know, my, I tend to lean towards, like, I'll tell you, at movie night, don't, don't bother enforcing. There are, and, and it's not been a problem, right? This is, I, I don't think we're gonna have, you know, people drinking from paper bags and throwing wild drunken parties in our parks. I think, you know, people wanna have an evening picnic and bring a glass of wine, I think that happens a lot. I think, you know, people go for a walk, I know at movie night, you know, people bring their beverages of choice, and it's not an issue. So I tend to, to be more along the lines of, you know, let's just allow it. However, that seems to be the minority opinion, so I can, I can go towards permitted events only, you know, but again, if the, if the land preserve wants to do an event in the park, if, you know, there, there are organizations that could hold events in our parks that I think would be wonderful amenities to our community that people would enjoy attending, and so I don't feel the need, and that, you know, the bottom line is that people like to have a little glass of wine when they're sitting outside. So I would, I tend to be a little more lenient in what I would be willing to allow. I do think we should allow it, I think that that makes, that opens up possibilities for some really great events in our park spaces, even particularly for our own, for ourselves, and that, you know, going back to are we exceptions, are we not exceptions, this is where I get confused in that it sounds like these rules do apply to us. I know we talked about holding something in John Mead Park, and we're like, "Well, we can't do it because, like, the, the anniversary celebration, we can't do it because we can't serve alcohol, we have to do it in the parking lot." So these rules do apply to us, but the other ones don't, like lights and... Okay, we'll come back to that. But anyway, I just, I wanna make sure that if we wanted to have our 75th anniversary party in John Mead Park, we could do it.
I think, I think two things can be right at the same time, right? I think, I think, I think what, what I was suggesting is that we don't open it up to Joe Public to come out there and decide to have a Super Bowl party at Allen Hutto and have a keg.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I don't think it's...
But that's what I'm saying, like, I know I'm in the minority, but I'm okay with that.
But I am personally okay with opening it up to the land preserve or another nonprofit, that's kind of that happy medium, if we could say they're city-sponsored events or they're nonprofit events, but not, okay, maybe we could add that tail, tail to it as well, related to the city. Just something to put a, put some rails on it, but I don't think it's appropriate to have people just be able to go out there willy-nilly and, and start drinking in our parks.
Yeah, I, I...
And to your point, you keep talking about movie night, I mean, if movie night is a city-sponsored event, which it is, and the city can, can meet this requirement, the burden here, very easily, then movie night would be allowed for people to BYOB.
Yeah, I, well, no, not BYOB, it's served.
Yeah, to clarify that we're not talk, oh, I'm gonna let Laura explain it.
Can you speak up a little bit, sorry?
I, I'm gonna let Laura explain it, Laura is the liquor permitting guru.
Yeah, and Kathy can correct me if I get any of this wrong, but, so for a city event that has alcohol, it's a public event, so we need a special event liquor permit, which is a state-regulated permit, so we have to meet all of those regulations. You all recently passed an ordinance that amended our liquor code, so it's now, we do local approval only, which minimizes the bureaucracy, but we still have to follow all the state statute regulations related to those permits. BYOB is not an option with special event liquor permits, as far as I understand it. They're pretty regulated as far as where you get the alcohol, who can donate alcohol, what happens to the alcohol, where it's stored, you have to serve, yeah, lots of stuff.
Well, right, and I think, I think BYOB would really just require that it's allowed, that if I go to, and you know, we did just build a picnic shelter, and so I envision that people will want to have little family reunions, or they'll wanna do a birthday party, and I don't have, I don't have a problem with them bringing some beers or some Trulies or whatever it is they want. So, I mean, I think the only way like a BYOB thing works is if you're allowed to bring your drink to the park and consume it there.
Yes, staff concurs.
Yeah, so, but anyway, that's...
And that's fine, I, I could be convinced of that, too, Katie, again, this is not something I feel strongly either way about, it just, anyway, let's, let's hear what Randy and Afton have to say.
Exactly, those are my thoughts.
Counsel Wheel.
Thank you. I'm a little more in the space of walk before we run, that is, today, verboten all the way around, on the, so maybe limit the geography, Allen Hutto, and we could include the city hall property and, and John Mead, so that we could, we could use those spaces. I would limit it to city events out of the blocks, you know, again, in the spirit of walk before we run, because we can always become more liberal, you know, about it as time goes on. I think wine and beer is probably indicative of the fact that I'm not a hard liquor drinker, so it's probably a good place to start as well on, on what should we be serving. Yeah, and I think that's almost all of the questions that we were asked to provide feedback on, and I'm also thinking that this movie night must be a really happening event, and I need to go there.
Counsel Sirfavi.
Yeah, for somebody who doesn't drink between 9:30 AM and 11:00 AM, I guess it's an interesting question, but look, for, for me personally, I tell you my personal opinion, and then at the same time, I tell you what I think, you know, how I would vote on this, but personally, I don't like the idea of mixing park and alcohol. I look at parks as a, as a place that the kids run around, you know, the families come together, I don't know, whatever family events you wanna do it, and that's, a lot of families do have family events and celebration without a single drop of alcohol. I'm not here to judge yes or no, one is good, one is bad. I don't like the idea personally of mixing that. I wanna be able to have, you know, I want to have a three-year-old, five-year-old kid that is running around and having a good time, and not worry about that table over there that had too much to drink. So with that being said, I'm not necessarily too crazy about it, but I'm not voting for myself, or, or, or this is not Afton City. This is, this is a city that, we have a lot of responsible citizens that do like to go ahead and, and have gatherings and, and enjoy alcohol with friends. I am, I am, I am in, I'm okay with having alcohol as city events. I'm okay if, for permitted events, if people wanna come in and actually do get a permit, and, and, and so there's at least some level of work is involved in that process. But I would say, you know, we can always change things, so we, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, and I'm willing to try this, but I would really wanna come back in six months, in a year, or whatever amount of time, and talk to our police department and say, "What did you see?" Because I have not yet been, maybe it's the crowd I hang out with, I've never been a party, which out of 50 people, somebody doesn't go nuts, can limit themselves. And what I'm worried about here is that somebody drinks too much, get on the road, there are kids running around in these parking, in these parks, it's dark, they have too much to drink, and they gotta drive home. So those things bother me, but I'm willing to give it a try, but I, I really would like on this topic to have the police monitor it and, and provide us input as what is happening, what's going on. That's all, back to you.
Any other thoughts or comments?
We do have, right?
Oh, I had skipped between both. I'm, yeah, I'm doing a little roundup now to check my notes and see if we need, go ahead, Laura.
And I just wanted to clarify that liquor is allowed in city hall currently. We've had a couple, we're going to have a couple events, we've had an event, Art Commission, where we've gotten a special event liquor permit for that.
It's not allowed in the joint safety facility because of...
Correct.
That's the fire district's rules.
Yep.
So, to clarify, if, as I can see, these parks and Quincy Farm being very similar, you know, where you would have events, how would that permitting process, you go through a general permit, and then you would apply for the liquor permit as well?
Right, two different permit applications, really, yeah, you fill out your event permit to reserve the space on there, we have a question, are you going to serve alcohol? If yes, then they, Emily sends them to me, if I'm not already talking to them, and we go through the special event liquor permit process, which only certain organizations can receive, are eligible for a special event liquor permit. We haven't had a non, like a, a nonprofit, a political candidate, there are certain state statutes.
The city itself.
The city itself, yes. We haven't had an individual or an, somebody that's not eligible for a special event liquor permit apply for that, I don't know that that's come up, so if someone wanted to rent out council chambers for a birthday party, which would be a little weird, but...
Mayor, I don't know if there's a consensus, it seems like there's...
No, I was gonna ask, Director Black, whether, you, you've got a lot of different views.
Looking at my notes, it's very mixed. I do think there, I'm sorry, I do think I heard consensus, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but there might be a consensus about, or a majority about allowing it for city events in parks, and I think functionally, Laura, chime in if I'm missing something, but the only change that that would make would be if the Art Commission, for example, wanted to have a fundraiser in John Mead Park with wine, they could do that, but PTRC had talked about, you know, our events, to a lot of your points, are kid-friendly events, and PTRC had talked about our existing, you know, movie night, winter celebration, car show, they're not interested, and I'm, I'm frankly not interested, in adding alcohol to any of those events, it was more thinking about future events that we might wanna hold, like, something like the 75th where it's sort of a one-off special celebration, and giving the city the opportunity, or the Art Commission the opportunity, to have an event with alcohol. It seems like, I heard a majority that, that that change would be acceptable, but, but not enough of, you know...
I, I think I heard, there was enough...
Not excitement about that change, just if we have to change something, we'd accept that, but at this time, it doesn't sound like council is really interested in going through this process to make the change, because it doesn't...
I, I think I heard that there was enough change for at least a discussion, starting at the PTRC level, for that basic formula.
For the city events.
Yes.
Yes, I think you just articulated it correctly.
But I think PTRC could benefit from hearing the variety of views from council, and maybe there's an opportunity for them to then come and...
Yeah, I, I'll bring this back to PTRC at their August meeting, and then maybe we can ask the chair if she can come speak with you all after that to...
What is, what is involved procedurally, you mentioned, you know, if, if we are supportive of even doing this at all, then you'd go back to PTRT, PTRC and recommend code changes, and how extensive are those code changes? Because I think you're right, city events, there really aren't any, I mean, there really aren't any.
One a year, maybe.
Yeah, I mean...
That, that would be appropriate for, for alcohol.
Right, like, the Art Commission might do something, and they probably would only do it in the park if it's in, if the art is in the park. So if it's limited to here, then that's limited to that, and then there's our 75th anniversary celebration, which by the way, is gonna be over in about six weeks.
Yes.
So...
I, I think that the thought and some of the discussion for the Art Commission events was if you could have something in Allen Hutto Memorial Commons and have a fundraiser where there's music and wine, and people could go sit, I think that that's probably the...
And I should say, we're sort of putting words in the Art Commission's mouth, I think, because they haven't talked too much about that. We did let them know that they could only have it in city hall right now, but given the opportunity, they would probably enjoy having, they've talked about having plain air, I believe it's called, gatherings where you paint outside in the past, so something like that, we thought, "Oh, maybe they'd like to make that a fundraiser event," but, yeah.
So I think you have direction to bring forward, at least pursue that idea. It seems like they're supporting council for city, city events, Hutto and John Mead.
Yes.
We can look at that, I think it's a very simple code change, actually, you can just accept the city from the, from the provision, it wouldn't be difficult to do.
So I'll plan to bring that, sort of more contained question or suggestion to PTRC, and then I'll bring that feedback back to council.
All right. Very good.
Thank you all, that was helpful.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing more, we have 15 minutes, we can take a break, we have to, we will recess now, but then reconvene at 6:30 for the regular meeting of the City Council. City Council, sorry about that. We will call it to order and have a roll call of members, please.
Counselor Safavi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Glad to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next matter on the agenda is audience participation, I think we might have some signups. Thank you. First, Janice, is it Hunt, I'm sorry, Hunt? Thank you, you may approach.
Hi, I'm Janice Hunt, I'm at, and Jim Hunt, we're at 1776 East Tufts Avenue. We have a problem with parking. We're on a, Tufts, East Tufts is very small, it's 15 feet wide, it's a dead-end street, and there are four homes on there. We're having a problem with all the construction, we're on a flag lot, we sit back about 350 feet, so when we go out of our driveway, and our driveway is narrow, we can't turn, we can't get out, we are blocked, it's been going on for a year, I've been, started calling about six, seven months ago, my husband's been calling. It's just a mess all the time, and nothing seems to get done.
Yeah, there's, I guess, right now, two construction jobs that are going on, and the issue is, as Janice said, it's a real narrow street, but these construction guys park on both sides of the street, making it very difficult to get through, and we chatted with Randy about it, and he's been very forthcoming and helped us a lot on it, but it's, and we've talked to code enforcement several times, we've probably called him 30 times, yeah, easily. And, you know, they come by and, and the construction guys move for, you know, half a day, and then the next day, they're all back. And as Janice said, it's been going on for a year, and for six months, we put up with it, and then about six months ago, we started calling code enforcement on it, and, as I understand it, according to the, the laws of Cherryhold Village, if you're doing a construction project, and you've got two and a half acres, then all the construction traffic has to park on your property and not on the street. And so what, what we'd like to ask is that the city consider installing signs that say no commercial parking along the street there. We've lived there since, I guess, 1987, so 34 years, and, you know, every time somebody buys a house and, you know, tears it down, we've put up with this, and it's probably happened six times in the last, probably 10 years. First 20 years we lived there, you know, it wasn't an issue, because nobody was tearing down properties, buying them and tearing them down, but, you know, we just, it's, it's become very frustrating, and as I said, would like to ask that the, the city consider putting some signs up. And, and the biggest culprits are Designs by Sundown, and they're doing a huge, what would you call it, like a landscaping job right across from our driveway, and these guys park on, they have these big dually's with the big trailers on the back, and they park on both sides of the street. And I've, I've put calls in and spoken with Designs by Sundown, probably three or four times, you know, letting them know that it was a problem, and they claim they'll take care of it, and, and the next day, somebody else is parked out there, so...
We've had paggy, just where it says on the paggy, unable to deliver, one time, two times, three times, you know, I don't get my medicine, I have to go and go to FedEx, or I have to go to UPS in order to get this, and it's, and today again. So that's why we're here, we've been cussed at, when we've asked them to move, they said very foul language to us, and so at some point, I think, Designed by Sundown, I think, should start getting fined, that's the only way that they're going to pay attention, because otherwise, nothing happens. They block us, we have to wait, I don't know if I'm going to go for an appointment, if I have to sit there and wait 20 minutes for the trucks to move. And also along Tufts, there's a home on Franklin and Tufts, and it has about 25 dead trees on that easement, and they are, you know, at least 25 feet tall, and they're completely dead. This is, and there's about 20 to 25 of them, this is a fire hazard, and, I mean, are those allowed?
Yeah, and that's kind of a separate issue, but, but it is an issue. But, but getting back to what Janice said about not being able to get deliveries, we actually had to, we canceled our... had to, we canceled our trash service with Waste Management, because of all the times that Waste Management could not get down to pick up our trash, we're kind of at the end of Tufts there. And probably at least a half dozen times, so we just finally canceled our trash service because ours is a 100-yard driveway, and so when we take our trash out, especially in the wintertime, it's a pain to get it out there. And if the trash truck can't pick it up, and it's another two weeks to get the recycle back, we've got to take everything back, haul it back to our garage, and wait another two weeks. So we actually, because of the problems with all this construction, parking, and blocking the street, you know, we did cancel that. You know, not a huge thing, but it seems like, no matter what we do, you know, every time, every day we go out there, there's somebody parked there.
Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Mr. for alerting us to this. And Will, our staff will be in touch. We'll try to see if we can do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Janie Carpenter.
Good evening. Good evening, members of City Council, Mayor Stewart, and city staff. Nice to see you all again. My name is Janie Carpenter. I reside at 9 Random Road. And I'm here tonight as board president of the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, a local nonprofit, just to provide a quick update of our activities. We have really appreciated the opportunity for the land preserve to hold, do our educational, environmental education programs at Quincy Farm this spring and summer, and connect people to the beautiful nature we have in our community. Just as a quick summary of what we've been doing, so far this year, we've held 13 programs at Quincy Farm, plus one program at Woody Hollow, and another at the John Mead Park Grand Opening, which was very fun. We've had over 160 people sign up with participants of all ages. And in particular, the honeybee sanctuary and beekeeping programs, community beekeeping programs, have been a really big hit. It's been really fun to see that take off. We've engaged experienced beekeepers like Mike, Councilman Gallagher, and first timers and kids and families. We had a whole troupe out painting bee boxes on May 15th, which was really fun. So we really appreciate your support for the beehives at Quincy Farm, and we look forward to growing that program. It sounds like there's a lot of closet, or beekeepers in our community, and people who are interested in beekeeping. Looking forward, we are planning three programs in August, and our trail walk event, our program, on Sunday, September 12th. And the trail walk is sort of our annual conservation day, where we invite a lot of different organizations to come, and we highlight local conservation efforts, plus some family fun in there to get everybody out for a lovely day. And we're really excited to have it at Quincy Farm this year. We'd love to have you join us for one of our programs, anytime it works for you. And so we usually post them in the crier. We have an e-newsletter, so please, if you can't find it, reach out, be happy to share. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Agenda item number five, anybody here from the city boards, commissions, or committees? I'll move on then to agenda item six. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have co-chair for the 75th Anniversary Committee, Thomas Berry, here today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need my glasses.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
It's nice to see your faces this time. It's been a while. Thomas Berry, 1800 East Stanford Avenue, co-chair of the 75th Anniversary Committee. And I just wanted to come in front of you all today to ask permission to potentially hang, or install, or place our time capsule that we're going to be dedicating at the 75th Anniversary Event on August 28th, somewhere here in this beautiful building. And I actually have kind of a piece of paper the size of what the time capsule is going to be, and so I wanted to show that to you and talk a little bit about that. It's okay? Let me grab the piece of paper. Okay, so, is everyone familiar with the time capsule concept that we're planning? Okay, excellent. So it's going to be made of stainless steel, and this is, this black interior border is basically the size of it. Don't be alarmed, this is not the size of the copy that'll be on the front of it. This was just kind of what we printed out as a demo. So that's about the size of it. Jessica, do you know the depth of the unit? It's, I'm guessing, six inches, maybe?
I think it's nine.
Nine inches deep? Okay, so, nine inches deep, and stainless steel. And then this will actually be laser etched into the front of it. Smaller, kind of in the center of it, so it should be a really nice-looking piece, something that we'd love to display in Town Hall here. So I wanted to kind of get your feedback. One area, I'm not sure if it's feasible or not, but right when you come in the breezeway on the right-hand side, there's a brick wall. Right now, I think there's an evacuation plan there, kind of offset on the one wall, would be kind of a nice piece there centered on that wall. But other than that, we're open to suggestions as to where y'all think it would be a great place for, when villagers come in and visit Town Hall, they can remember that dedication in that moment, and think about what's in that time capsule, and plan out 25 years from now when they're going to come and see it opened up, and relive that moment, and all those fun things. I've got the little list here of what we're proposing to put inside of it. It's going to be kind of fun, and we're excited to dedicate that on August 28th.
Very good. Would you like to bring us up to speed on more on August 28th, on what the plans are for that as well?
Absolutely, yes. So we've got a really kind of exciting, yet simple at the same time, event planned for the 28th. It will be from 3:00 until 7:00 on Saturday, August 28th. And what we are looking to do is just welcome everyone in the village to come after this kind of crazy year and a half, to come together, socialize, engage, kids play, and enjoy beautiful John Mead Park that has, with all the blessings of the rain we've had this year, is looking really, really cool, looking green and lush, and filling in nicely. I know over the years, it's going to fill in more and really come to the ultimate vision of what it was planned to be, but it's looking great. And so we have got, kind of just walk you through a little bit of a rough timeline, from 3 till 4, guests will arrive, they'll be welcomed by the 75th Anniversary Committee Welcome Table, give everybody a name tag. We will identify residents that have lived in the village for an extended period of time. I'm not sure, I think it's 25 or 30 years, potentially longer than that. And they'll go, going to get a special ribbon on their name tag to designate that, so we want to kind of acknowledge the long-term residents in the village. And everyone will get a program that outlines the schedule for the day. On the back of the program will be a map of John Mead Park, and all the, with little icons donating, and a legend donating, notating, sorry, where the things, points of interest will be throughout the day. So that first hour, we welcome guests to visit the Wine and Beer Corral, which will be located in the parking lot, which I believe follows the rules that we have here for alcohol service in the village. And so the wine corral will be a nice place to pull in, get a glass of wine, grab a beer, and while you're drinking that beverage, you must stay in the corral. We'll have some tables, and cocktail tables, and chairs and such for people to relax. From there, you'll be able to enter into the park. You can take a left and head over to the Hutto Commons, or you can take a right into the main area of the park. And over in the main areas, we will have, we're going to be serving pizza for lunch. We're also going to be serving hot dogs. We've got a hot dog stand, gourmet hot dogs. So all the fixins on top of there. We'll have a refreshment station, where we're going to have lemonades, and iced tea, and kids beverages, and waters, infused waters, things like that. We'll also be serving cookies and things. The idea really is to get people to get in the park and go and enjoy the park, not just congregate in one area. We want them to spread out a little bit. So we will be serving ice cream over in Hutto Commons, which will all obviously be a draw to get people over there. We will be having some musicians and some music. Still working on the details there, but hopefully the choir from Cherry Hills Village Elementary. And then still working on the, kind of the headline artists so far, so. But we are looking to showcase music in the Hutto Commons, which is what it was designed for, so we're really excited about that, and ice cream. So after the first hour, after everybody's mingled a little bit, the kids are playing in the lawn, out front of the shelter there, enjoying the boardwalk area, and the pond, the wetlands, and the ponds. We will, at that point, have the dedication, which, we need to nail out the details on that, but, Mr. Mayor, we're hoping that, obviously, you'll be a part of that, potentially previous mayors, anybody, you know, from all the council members, anybody would like to be involved, we'd be excited about that. And so, having a nice amplified speech or talk to the community, talking about the 75 years, where we've been, where we've come now. And then dedicate, go through the time capsule, and talk about the items that kind of will have it on display. All the items are going to be put in there, for example, like a current generation iPhone, what is the price of a current Epic Pass, gasoline prices, logos from current things, you know, brands that we're familiar with, face masks, obviously, a roll of toilet paper for fun, some current currency, $1 bills, $5 bills, things like that, the CHV trail map, High on Country book, if we could get a donation from someone, that'd be great. And we've got the videos, the mayor's competition for student-proposed videos, different things, it'll be on a zip drive, a few different things like that, challenge coins, so, things just, you know, unique to the village and unique to this time we're in right now. And we'll package everything up into the time capsule, lock it up, and going to dedicate that, and, you know, just kind of cherish the history in the village. And then at a later time, that'll obviously be mounted somewhere here in the Town Hall. And then from there, from, so that brings us to 4:30-ish, from 4:30 through 7, it's just a social mixer, essentially. Please enjoy, have a drink, have some food, see all the friends that you've, maybe haven't seen in a long time, and enjoy the park.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. That sounds terrific. Really reflects, I think, our village. I think you've done a great job of planning, and the whole committee has done a great job. Really appreciate it. I don't know, for your first question, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about it. If they don't, you probably stump us here for the question of the location, so maybe I can suggest they get back to you personally if they want to, to think about it, unless anybody else has any other thoughts.
No, the only thing I would say, you know, we have a good number of people in the village that are gluten-free or vegetarian, so. That's a minor.
Very good point, yeah. We'll make sure that we have options for gluten-free vegetarian, certainly, and dairy-free, like myself.
Other questions for Mr. Berry? Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
Giving us the preview, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is item six, Consent Agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 6C, if I could.
Any other removals from the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and D.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take up Consent Agenda, item 6C. You have the floor, Councillor Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, whenever we get such a generous donation, I hate to let it go as a consent agenda item, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly recognize Kathy Finger for her very generous donation of this piece of artwork. She has been a very dedicated, long-term member of the Art Commission, has done so much for Cherry Hills Village, and I just think of this as kind of the cherry on top. So Kathy, if you're out there, thank you very much.
That's well said. Any other, take a motion then? If I can make a motion then.
So I move to approve Consent Agenda, item 6C.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes as well, and thanks to Ms. Finger for a very nice donation. Now we're moving on to Agenda Item Eight, which is Unfinished Business. And this is Council Bill Six, Series 2021, Making Findings and Determination With Respect To A Petition Concerning The Organization Of The Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle And Hudson Parkway General Improvement District pursuant to Section 3125601 CRS and Providing For The Question Of The Organization Of Such District To Be Referred To The Electors thereof, along with additional ballot issues, authorizing the issuance of bonded indebtedness and imposition of general property taxes to accomplish the purpose of said district. This is the second and final reading, and City Clerk Gillespie, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that, Mayor. I won't repeat that whole title. So, good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of City Council. We are once again talking about the proposed GID, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District. Just as a reminder of the location, it's in the Quincy Holly area, 11 properties, and will remove poles and bury an existing utility line. As part of the outline of the process, we are on second and final reading of the ordinance. It was approved on first reading at the last meeting, where we had our public hearing. And next, assuming this ordinance is passed on second reading, we will consider the resolution calling the special election. Here is our nice, long recommended motion, and staff is happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? This puts it on the ballot for this November, correct?
Correct.
There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Six, Series 2021, Making Findings and Determinations With Respect To A Petition Concerning The Organization Of The Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle And Hudson Parkway General Improvement District pursuant to 31-25-601 CRS and Providing For The Question Of The Organization Of Such District To Be Referred To The Electors thereof, along with additional ballot issues, authorizing the issuance of bonded indebtedness and imposition of general property taxes to accomplish the purposes of said district on second and final reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, we can take a voice vote? No, this is a roll call vote, I'm sorry, please, roll call.
Councillor Safavi?
Yes.
Councillor Wheel?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councillor Sheldon?
Yes.
Councillor Blum?
That passes unanimously, and they'll be on the ballot this November. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, which is New Business, Resolution 21, Series 2021, Calling A Special Election To Be Held November 2nd, 2021, In Coordination With Rappahoe County For The Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle And Hudson Parkway General Improvement District, and again, City Clerk Gillespie.
Thank you again. Section 2.10 of the Home Rule Charter states that a special election may be called by resolution of the council, and requires that the resolution calling a special city election set forth the purpose or purposes of such election. Therefore, we are bringing this resolution for council's consideration. We've already set out the ballot language, but this just follows our charter procedures to call the special election officially. And staff would be happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve Resolution 21, Series 2021, Calling A Special Election To Be Held On November 2nd, 2021, In Coordination With Rappahoe County For The Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle And Hudson Parkway General Improvement District.
Second.
Motion of second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all, voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, Item 9B, which is Resolution 22, Series 2021, A Site Plan Amendment Extension Pertaining To Parcels Owned By Denver First Church Of The Nazarene. This is City Manager Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Normally, this would be senior planner Workman presenting to you. Somebody screwed up and gave him leave for a summer vacation. Don't know who did that. So, the applicant, Denver First Church of the Nazarene, has submitted a request for an extension to their site plan amendment granted by council in March. I'll review that in just a moment. I just want to note for the record, though, that the applicant has provided all the necessary affidavits required for public notifications. So moving on to the next slide, just as a, this is a little bit of a reminder, just to refresh everyone, the site, the subject property is, that was rezoned and had a plat associated with it, is the 3.3 acres just to the west of Monroe, south of Hamden. In March of this year, council approved a site plan that removed an obligation from 2013 to provide 264 parking spaces on the western parcel, subject to two conditions. One of those is that a shared parking agreement with Brave must be executed within 90 days, and that prior to issuance of permits, that Denver First Church will be required to submit appropriate documentation for, you know, all the applicable referral partners to review and approve, for things like the final public improvement agreements, et cetera. The site plan was accompanied by a request for rezoning and a plat, rezoning to R4. The site plan was accompanied by a request for rezoning and a plat, rezoning to R4, and a plat for four new lots, that's preliminary zoning, not final zoning, just as a reminder. The shared parking agreement was between Denver First Church and Brave, the city was a third-party beneficiary to that agreement, and it, in addition to, we obviously have authority to enforce compliance via the municipal code in addition to those other tools. Denver First Church proposed this parking agreement in response to their site plan amendment as a method by which Denver First could accommodate, you know, the parking demands. The deadline for them to execute this was June 19th, but the city did receive the request to extend those deadlines before it expired, and per code, that, that works. So, they are requesting an eight-month extension, and so just, as a, to frame up the conversation for tonight, we aren't here to necessarily rehear the whole case or anything, we're just considering the request to provide the extension to the deadlines. The criteria, there are criteria in the code, next slide, yep, you can see on the screen here, there's just two criteria, and I won't read this to you, but it's pretty straightforward, they aren't necessarily the most complicated criteria. Next slide. I should note, though, since the packet went out, there is additional information, and staff is aware that they are under contract with Brave to actually sell this lot, the subject property, to Brave. That's the 3,500 block of South Monroe. That direction, just, it creates some questions, and probably warrants additional research for us to understand the implications of that. So, that uncertainty, with the potential questions surrounding the site, and the interrelatedness of that request for the site plan, and its relatedness to the zoning and the subdivision, originally, staff did not have a recommendation, one way or the other, however, given this news that we have learned, we are recommending that we, that council grant this extension, however, we are recommending two conditions that go along with that, and you can see those on the screen. In short, the first one is that we previously, we staff, had previously reviewed with our parking consultant, the shared parking agreement analysis that they did, and we just would like to review and approve that again, not knowing maybe if that has changed at all. We, it seems to us that there's maybe a possibility it might have. And the second one is really just a condition to ensure that we're, we're being informed and kept in the loop on this process. So with that said, staff is recommending that we grant this extension to give the applicants, Brave Church, and staff, and the attorney, more time to fully understand the implications of what this might mean, not only for the site plan agreement, but the other two processes as well. So, staff is available for any questions you have, I do know that representatives from Denver First are also here tonight with, with their request and a presentation.
All right, thank you, City Manager Kramer. Questions, Councilor Blum?
Yes, first question is, what is the current zoning of this piece of property?
It was rezoned to R4.
So if it's rezoned to R4, it cannot be used for parking, is that my understanding?
That, that is, R4 does not allow parking, that is correct.
So if it was to be sold to Brave Church, it cannot be used for parking?
With its current zoning, that is correct. That, that's part of what we would want to explore further. I, you know, we've had enough time to identify areas we want to investigate and analyze. I, I will just, there's a possibility that you all may have some really good questions on the results and the consequences of this, and we may not have all those answers tonight, hence the reason why we're recommending approval of the extension.
Well, but the extension, to get those answers, is not going to take eight months, from my understanding.
That, I would, I don't think that it will take us eight months, no.
How long will it take for us to get the, those answers and the consequences? Because my understanding is it's currently zoned for a single family, if it's go back to be used for parking, was there an agreement entered into with the adjacent homeowners about the development of that?
Yeah, so if you recall, there were a couple of items that they needed to follow through on, and the Good Neighbor Agreement, they did actually sign that with the Covington HOA, and that was a very positive outcome of that. I do, I'm aware, and I think council's been made aware, that some of the HOA members still have concerns as a result of this news, so, but that, that was a step that they took in, in accordance with the direction council had provided.
So the question, with respect to that Good Neighbor Agreement, is that in effect now? Is that something that's going to be voided if we do this extension? I'm sure those neighbors are going to want to have input into that.
We haven't reviewed that.
Correct. Again, I would, I would defer on that till we could investigate that more.
But the Good Neighbor Agreement was a condition of the zoning? Was that a condition of the zoning?
No.
Was not? But as part of the site development agreement?
I don't think it was in the site plan either.
I think it was requested by council and committed to by the church, but not actually a condition in the site plan amendment resolution.
Correct, that's right.
So, so really, my question for staff is, why do we need an eight-month extension to get the answers that we need to make a decision on, in council?
Eight months was the timeframe requested by the church? I will offer to you that staff does not need eight months to do our portion of it, but I would suggest that you ask the applicants for their reasoning behind the eight months.
So my, my question really for staff is, how much time does staff need to address those questions?
Undetermined.
Yeah, I would, I would say, once we sort of really peel back the pages, I think we'll know better, and probably a week or two would be my guess.
Well, and we probably need to do a little more fact-finding before we begin our analysis.
So probably by next council meeting, we could get some answers.
Yeah, probably. I, I, I mean, honestly, I think four months would probably be more than enough from a staff perspective, but there's, there's other things, I would just offer to you, there's more than just the staff, right? You have the relationship between Brave and Denver First, you know, if there is an involvement with Covington, that all may take longer than the time staff might need, so.
And I would just add that when this request reminder first came through, staff did not have a recommendation, it was completely up to, to the church to present, and that was, that request was based on a representation that this was a procedural paperwork thing that needed to be worked out, and that was the basis for their eight months. But then we've learned some new information that may present additional complicating factors for the city and its analysis, and so that's why, we already had the eight months on the books, but now we're saying we're supporting an extension at some level, I'm not sure, we are not saying it's supporting eight months.
One more question is, if there is no extension, what's the status then?
They would be in violation.
Yeah, they, they would be in violation of the site plan, so we would have a rezoned property with no ability to park on it, it'd be a.
They would have to start from scratch, I would say.
Some, some processes somewhere, to do something, depending on what the direction would end up being, some, you couldn't, we couldn't just leave it as-is, it would be unusable.
Okay, I refer to my land use expert.
Councilor Sheldon, you have any questions for staff?
Land use expert, I'm, I got so many questions rolling around in my head right now, I, I guess I'm going to start with why? And maybe, are we opening this up to the applicant?
First, I want to have questions from council to staff, and then we can, I'm happy to have the applicant speak here.
Applicant question, applicant question, applicant question. Maybe staff question. Come Christmas time, if we gave them a six-month extension, or eight-month extension, as staff's recommending, what happens to the overflow parking requirements that, if they can't park there, we're just back to the, the number of people in the building not exceeding the matrix that we went through?
Yes.
We're relying on the, not new, but the parking per seats, or parking per, whatever the, whatever we concluded at our last dialogue.
Number per seat, that's right.
Okay. All right, well, I, I'm going to hold on, more questions for staff right now, I've got a bunch of questions for Steve, and, and look forward to hearing them, so I'll listen to whatever else council has for now.
Councilor Gallagher, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm going to defer questions.
Councilor Brown?
No questions at this time.
Councilor Wheel, any questions for staff?
No.
Councilor Savavi, any questions for staff?
No question, other than just a quick comment, it seems like we've been going in a circle, and this circle has become a mess. And, you know, obviously, I think we want to make sure that, as a city, we provide solution and be as helpful as possible, but there's so much, there's so many questions, and again, it goes back to why, that would be the starting point, that you've got to get a better, clear understanding, that, that's all. So, I defer my questions, for later.
All right, well, I'll exercise my discretion, then open up to the applicant to come up and, I think, answer the question, why first, and then illuminate us, thank you, Steve. Say your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Ferris, address is 820 South Fillmore Street in Denver. Great to see Mayor Stewart, council members in person again. I'm here with our attorney, Melissa Zucaris, for Denver First Church, the executive pastor, Darren Reed, and the attorney for Brave Church is also here, Michael Norton. So I just want to let, you know, we're all available for questions if needed. If you have to summarize this, it's an unusually timed real estate deal. What we've got is, we've got that approval from you on March 2nd, and we were pleased as punch and ready to roll, and we had one detail that we, two details, we wrapped up the one with the neighbors, Covington, and then with Brave Church, we started talking to them more and more, and suddenly they, suddenly, I should say, or unusually, they referred to our agreement as saying, well, we don't want to sign that agreement because we may want to buy your land. We're like, okay, that's, that's reasonable, we, we're looking to sell, but can you sign this agreement first, and then we'll talk about it later? Well, that wasn't working out too well, we talked around, and, and we, you know, two churches aren't exactly real estate professionals, they, they, there's some things to work through before they get to the actual transaction, so that took time, and lo and behold, it was late May, and we knew our clock was ticking on getting that agreement into you, and we asked for that extension. Initially, we couldn't speak to the real estate exactly, but on the formal request that came in in June, we referenced, we had a real estate transaction that we were wrestling with, and we weren't trying to hide that, there's nothing unique about it. And I got to tell you, from the church's perspective, mine, and Melissa, our attorney, we've spent two years and $200,000 in our entitlements, and we did not want to let that go. We, and, and that's why we're here again tonight, because we still don't want to let it go. But we do have a PSA now signed with Denver First Church as of June 30th, I'm sorry, with Brave Church, between the two churches, has been signed. So, those two parties now are in a, in a formal agreement, but as you know, especially those in real estate, just because you have a contract doesn't mean it's going to close. And that's where we're at right now, we're working through some details, Title Report just came in an email today, and we, we actually tried to have this shared parking agreement signed before the PSA, and that just didn't come to terms, and we agreed to make the deal without that. Sometimes there, things don't work out the way we wanted, but we've done everything we could to get to this point, and now, our risk is that this transaction will not close, and we just need a little more time, in case it doesn't close, we do want to go back and complete the plat, and do the, finalize the agreement, make Covington as happy as possible, dedicate that land to them per our agreement with them, work further with Chris and Paul and Kathy to finalize this. We really appreciate all the time that's gone into this already, we hope we meet the criteria, we went with eight months, most because we felt it was reasonable, given the, the code implied that 12 months was kind of a standard, we said eight months should work for us. You know, we, we're not wedded to that time, but we, it was kind of plucked, but we were willing to work with you on, on that as well. And that's it, we really apologize that this has come to this, but when someone knocks on your door and says, we want that land, we won't make you happy with your arrangement with Cherry Hills Village, it's kind of difficult, and we were like, we balanced it, and that's where we're at today, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilor Blum, any questions?
There is a PSA that's fully executed now?
Yes.
Between the two churches? And in the PSA, is there a condition on the zoning that has to be satisfied in order to have the closing?
I don't recall offhand, and we could talk about that zoning, do you? There is not, okay. And, and we've contemplated if, it was always our intent that that rezoning wouldn't take effect, but apparently it did, and that's, but if we have to, we might have to file to rezone it back.
But, but there's no, so they would, they would close with the property, subject to whatever the current zoning is, in the executed PSA, is that correct?
That's the way it's written right now.
Okay. And then the other question really relates to timing, you said eight months, and you could do it in four months, I mean, what is a reasonable expectation to resolve whatever issues you have between the two churches?
Well, the interesting thing about that is, the resolution of what issues may come up may depend on the analysis that Chris was talking about just a little while earlier, so it's a difficult question to answer.
No other questions?
Councilor Sheldon?
Thanks, Steve, I for one appreciate asking for an, an amount of time necessary to get through all your issues, so that you don't have to be back in front of us again asking for yet another extension. So, I'm not necessarily hung up on whether it's eight months, or six months, or four months, I'm just trying to understand how we got to where we are right now, and what you're, what you or the successor in interest to this property is going to be coming back to this body asking for in the future. Are we going to see, I'll just ask the question, is the plan for this property to be reverted back to parking for Brave? I'm going to, I'm sorry, let me back up, I'm going to ask a bunch of questions right now that may sound really elementary, like I'm taking a huge step back, but I'm just trying to get my arms around this, so that I can understand and deliberate on it with knowledge and, and understanding of this stuff. Is the, is the goal here to, that Brave is wanting to buy it from Denver First to convert it back to parking for Brave?
Yes, they want to maintain the parking lot.
Maintain the parking lot, and that'll be overflow for their big events and whatnot, is that right?
Their big events, and I think their regular Sunday services, they've been struggling as well with, with parking, and they want to use it for that.
How are the, how are the Covington neighbors, this is, I don't know if you're going to be able to opine to how the Covington neighbors will feel, but how are they going to feel about this going back to its original, or the last however many years it's been a parking lot, are they going to be happy or sad about this?
In talking to Pasquale Rigi about it, he said there's mixed feelings, you know, because some always wanted it to remain parking, and some saw it as, you know, reasonable with conditions and are working through to make it residential. So, he said, literally used those, that phrase, mixed feelings.
Yeah, I think when we deliberated on this, I remember something that Ashton said, you know, why, why not get rid of more asphalt? So I was, I was going round and round about getting rid of parking, you never get rid of parking, in my world, in real estate, you never get rid of parking, it's gold, parking, but you're not wrong, get rid of some asphalt, put in some trees, some landscaping around these homes. But now, having it reverting back, I'm, it's taken my brain a little bit of time to process what you're asking for right now, so I've got a few more questions, bear with me. When does your deal, when does your deal scheduled to close?
Let me ask, August 26.
Okay, and is, you asked if this, if the zoning was a contingency, my question is, is this extension a contingency? If this body turns you down tonight, does that kill your deal?
No, it does not.
So that, that closing, barring some other reason for it to fall apart, would continue even if you didn't get an extension, you had a property that was zoned for something that it, the current land use is, is a non-conforming use, is that what we would call it, Chris?
Certainly would call it non-conforming. If you're going to ask me if it was legal non-conforming or illegal non-conforming, that's another conversation.
I'm just trying to understand this whole thing.
Yeah, it would be non-conforming, yeah. If they didn't use it as parking, I suppose you could make the argument that, you know, they would just need to get a demo permit and execute the. demo permit and execute the subdivision, the final subdivision plat.
Well, but that's not their goal.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so a couple more, and I'm just trying, I'm getting closer to putting it all together. Damn, I can't write it. I just can't read it once I've written it. And so, I don't know if I asked this, will Brave come back then and rezone this after they've closed? If, if we grant this extension and you guys work out whatever you need to work out with staff, you guys close on this transaction in August as contemplated, you're still in your extension window, but you get whatever you need to get completed, is the expectation then that the buyer's going to come back to counsel and seek rezoning back to R4? I'm sorry, to R1?
Um, depending on what Chris's analysis reveals, that may be the only option we have. Well, it's the last option, but if that is the case, I think Brave is contemplating that.
Unless we can find a workaround, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Being able to park in R4?
Yeah, there's some ideas out there, but.
And I'm not trying to put you in the inquisition here. Again, I'm, I'm just trying to understand all this. Okay, the ink's barely dry on the zoning that we just did, but
Exactly.
Let me, let me keep thinking, but I'll, I'll pass.
Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Steve. Is this closing a hard closing date? All right, if we grant this extension and we start doing analysis, are you guys committed to close regardless of the outcome, whether or not you get feedback on rezoning?
I just can't speak to every party's take on this right now. I mean, I can see, we, is every, is our sincere intent to close, everyone is on board. I think that we're working together intently, but the results of tonight may influence that, and the results of Chris's analysis may also influence, as I noticed it, as I mentioned earlier.
Okay, so it is potentially a moving target.
Counselor Brown.
Are we just doing questions now? We'll have discussion later?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I don't think I have any real other questions except to make sure that I understand that the vacant lot adjacent to Brave Church is also, while it's not really relevant to this conversation, it's in, it's contemplated as part of your transaction.
That's correct.
Okay, that's it.
Counselor Wheel.
I think all my questions have been asked. Thank you.
Counselor Savaby.
Just a couple of quick questions, maybe more clarity for me. This property is not adjacent to Brave Church, correct?
No, it's not.
So if they, so if they turn into a parking lot, do they want to purchase this property because they really need, need an overflow? Is this an investment opportunity? Is it that they're sitting on too much money and they're better invested in something? I mean, there's so many possibilities, and so many questions that I have, and I would have loved to have Brave Church representative to be here to actually ask them that question.
He is.
You are. You're representing both.
No, no.
This is an attorney for Brave Church here.
I got it.
Thank you. I, I was thinking of giving you the opportunity, and that's coming.
Okay, maybe, maybe I ask those questions then when, uh, when the time comes. Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Ferris? Otherwise, I will give you Mr. Norton the opportunity to, to speak if you, if you'd like. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Michael Norton, and I am an attorney and do represent Brave Church in this transaction. Just by way of a little bit of background, our pastor, Jeff Schwartzentrob, has been discussing with Pastor Reed since last fall, the acquisition of some or all of the Denver First Church, the Nazarene property. This has not been something that just suddenly has developed. And our goals and objectives have been to acquire these parcels for the purposes for which they are, as we thought until just yesterday, presently zoned as R1. So the representations going into and subsequent to the purchase and sale agreement were that the so-called West Parking Lot, the 3.3 acre parcel was going to be still remaining as R1 and could be used for church parking lot, which is our desire for that church. We are rapidly growing and expanding church, as you heard a bit from Steve, and are now in need of excess parking. And with the cooperation of Denver First Church and Nazarene have been utilizing some of their parking, maybe even including the West Parking Lot. I'm not quite sure which, where people park, but I'm going to guess or speculate or assume that we are now using, as I think is Denver First Church of the Nazarene, that West Parking Lot. Just yesterday, I heard from Steve that there was a concern that had developed, that some considered that West Parking Lot already rezoned as R4. That's what brought me here to this meeting tonight as a, as an interested observer. To be quite honest with you, that is a problem for us. We, I'm not sure what my client will do with this information, with this knowledge, but, but that is a serious problem that we just learned about and did not know about with respect to that 3.3 acres. Now, in the last month or so, I myself have talked with members of the Covington neighborhood, Mr. Riggy, Big One, Greg Stevenson, who was a man I've known for 40 years, another, and a third, who was actually a member of our church. I don't recall the name right now. And I think we will have an extremely good working relationship with at least those three representatives of Covington, and perhaps as a result, all of Covington. So if, I'm speculating when I say this, but it seems to me one potential solution is legalization, as we heard it from Mr. Kramer, City Manager, legalization of the so-called non-conforming use. If that's something that could be achieved or accomplished, it might, it might satisfy, satisfy the issues. But it's a problem for us. I have to be very candid with you that we just learned about yesterday. So with that, I'll answer any other questions that.
Thank you for your, we really appreciate your words and, and tonight being here tonight. I'll start with Counselor Blum.
So it sounds to me, Counselor, that the, um, if this remains R4, I asked previously if there was a condition to the PSA, but apparently not.
Well, it's, it's, it's being purchased as a parking lot, so there is a condition.
So there is, there is a condition that.
Couple of the representations, both before and after, we, we view it as, as a condition.
Okay, so there, there is a condition that it would be either rezoned back to the original zoning, or there'd be some type of non-conforming approval of some type of use for parking. Is that right?
If it has, if it has effectively been rezoned, as I've heard tonight, the city manager at least believes to be the case, perhaps the city attorney as well believes to be the case, and it cannot now be used as a parking lot, that's a problem.
So, so it is a condition prior to closing that's scheduled August 28th?
My opinion it is. Now, what my client may do with this information is another issue.
Right, you can answer that. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Sheldon.
I'm afraid of, I'm afraid of a question from the expert here, so.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not an expert here. I just, I'm, I'm just dabbling. Did, did I hear you say that your pastor has been talking with Denver First since last fall about buying this property?
Yes.
That causes me a little bit of heartburn because we're, you know, we get asked to rezone a property, and now we're being asked to flip the zoning back, not tonight, but that's essentially what the next step's going to be tonight if we give this extension, I'm guessing. All the while, we were, if I recall correctly, back in, was it March or May when this was approved? March. I may be mistaken, and I may be thinking of a different case that was in front of us, but I think we felt some pressure on this body to get it approved the night we had to approve it. And maybe I'm wrong, but that was my recollection, that it was, there was a time sensitivity. We had to get it done, and and to hear now that, that there was dialogue about this potential transaction wanting to get done some six months even before that, causes me a little bit of heartburn about how this thing's going. Steve, I'll let you come up and address it. Just give me a second. Or if the mayor will let you come up and address it, I should say. And, and I'm interested to hear from our staff about this legalization of a non-conforming use at some point here, so that's, I guess, my comments for now.
Counselor Gallagher, comments?
I'm going to continue to listen because I have more questions.
Counselor Brown.
I have lots of comments, but no questions. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear that. Oh.
I said I have lots of comments, but no questions.
I can appreciate that.
Counselor Wild, any questions for Mr. Norton?
Yeah, I would say I'm also a little distressed finding out that there was dialogue going on. Because we were operating in good faith and, you know, didn't assume any differently on part of the applicant. The, I want to make sure I understood correctly. In this purchase-sell agreement, it's not just for the property that has been rezoned, but it also includes the two-acre lot?
That's correct. Two parcels at this time that are a part of the purchase and sale agreement. The 3.3 acre West Parking Lot and the two, two-acre, roughly two-acre, a little more than two-acre, right now, Grass
Contiguous, yeah.
Square, which is actually adjacent to the Brave Church property.
Okay, and I, and I would say, you know, without, I'll hear more and learn more, but it feels to me like eight months is excessive, and there are the Christmas holidays which could pose a parking problem, so I'm not, I, I may be in support of an extension, but it's probably not eight, eight months, at least for my vote.
I take no position on the extension. Brave Church has no position on the extension request. We obviously, well, I, I do have some comments myself, but.
But Randy, just to be clear, I think the the Christmas holiday thing is a non-issue because when we rezoned it, they proved up to us, which is why we agreed to rezone it. They proved up to us that they don't need the parking. So that parking doesn't exist anymore as far as we're concerned. Today, it doesn't exist. They, both churches should be able to operate in full capacity, as is, without this additional 284 parking spaces.
Yeah, well, before, before we get into council comments, Counselor Wheel, are you finished with your questions? Counselor Savaby, any questions for Mr. Norton?
I think there are more enough. First of all, thank you for providing additional clarity. I think it will be more of comments than questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, I would like, Mr. Norton, if, thank you for your words. Appreciate you being here tonight. And Mr. Ferris, if you have anything more you want to say, I'd, I'd give you an opportunity as well. Certainly. Of course.
I thank you for letting me just address with respect to Mr. Norton. I am the lead pastor at Denver First Church, and the first time that Pastor Jeff and I had a conversation anywhere remotely in line with their interest in purchasing any of these properties was actually in late March, not in the fall. So I wanted to make that correction because I think that's a key bit of information, just as I've listened to the council have a little bit of question around that. So when, and that conversation happened as a result of our continued conversations of trying to come to an agreement with the shared parking agreement. And he casually had brought in that up as if we would consider selling those properties to them. It was more of a casual conversation. It was not something that was official or any consideration given to that beyond just a conversation. So that would have been late March, not in the fall, right around the time that we had our initial conversation with you at council.
Do you mind stating your name one more time?
I'm sorry, my name's Darren Reed.
Reed?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for the pastor and council?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no more questions for staff, I'll open it up then for discussion among the council, or if anyone wants to make a motion to start it off. It's up, it's pleasure, what's the pleasure of council? Counselor Blum?
Mayor, I, I do have a couple more questions for council because I'm still confused about the current status. Current zoning, I understand, is R4. No doubt about that, and to be used for a single family for, if we don't grant whatever this extension is, I still don't understand what we're extending. If, if we don't grant the extension, then it remains R4. There is no site development plan. They'd have to start all over again. Is that my understanding?
The extent, the further we go down that conversation, the less answers we're going to have. That, that, that's why we're now suddenly recommending the, granting the extension.
But what, what, what exactly are we extending? If we don't extend it?
We're, we're extending the deadlines for them to submit the approved shared parking agreement.
Not the site development?
So, so in essence, the site plan approval that you gave is not fully closed. Site plan hasn't been fully approved yet. They, it won't be fully approved until the conditions are met. One of those conditions was that they had to perform a certain task within a certain timeframe. They aren't going to be able to meet that timeframe, so they're requesting an extension from council to give them more time to meet that deadline.
To meet the shared parking agreement?
Correct. It's entirely possible, though, that that extension may result in other information that we just weren't aware of when we did the actual hearing back in March, because the end goal is now different. So, so that research may then start to dive into the exact kind of questions that you are desperately wanting to know. The good news is, so do we. That's why we're, that's why we're, we're recommending to approve the extension.
But it seems to me if we're extending the time to do a shared parking agreement, of which is an outstanding contract, to buy it without that, what are we extending if we are trying to extend into a situation where there, there are two parties agree that it's going to be something else? That ma, it makes no sense to me.
Well, it's, it's my understanding that they, they want to continue to try and achieve the parking solution in the event that this contract, this real estate purchase falls apart, and then they would want to proceed on their original plan. Correct?
Further, I would add on to that, that the site plan approval that, that basically disconnects Denver First from utilizing this as parking was contingent upon them providing additional parking in other ways, including the shared parking agreement. So if this is now still zoned R4, the city still has an interest in ensuring that, that, that obligation regarding providing the additional parking is still somehow met. And so that's why I think it's advisable that we allow this process to continue forward so we can see how those additional parking requirements are going to be met. Hence, the first condition that, that we're recommending, that we actually take another review of the shared parking agreement.
You're, you're asking then that we extend that to get that until February 28th, 2022, which is six months, five, six months from now, is that correct?
Eight from the date on which, sorry.
The May, the May date.
From the date upon which the original condition would have expired, yes.
Well, the thing that I have a problem with, and, and I guess we're open to discussion now, Mayor, is the fact that we're going to wait for a shared parking agreement that is something that's not even contracted for in a existing, executed PSA.
But Brave Church isn't specified. The shared parking agreement doesn't have to be with Brave Church. There are a lot of possibilities that could,
but.
You know, they could bus people in from Welsher. I mean, who knows? That's for them to decide. That's why they want the extension.
But, but if Brave Church buys it for use as a parking, then Brave Church would have to do a shared parking agreement with Brave Church, which makes no sense.
Well.
No, 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 it's, it's, Denver First is still on the hook, though, for meeting its parking obligations. So if that's used for four lots, they still needed the shared parking agreement. If it's used for parking for Brave, if, they still need to account for that additional parking. So while there are more issues at play, and the interrelatedness to the zoning and the plat are certainly a and the plat are certainly a part of this conversation, materially, what you're voting on tonight is the requirement that they continue to demonstrate that they're providing enough parking. And I would offer to council with some confidence, no matter what direction we go, that will need to be shored up, no matter what.
So if there is no shared parking agreement, is Denver First Church in violation of its parking requirements? I thought we satisfied that at the, when they came in originally. Did we not?
If they, if the conditions aren't met, and therefore the site plan amendment isn't fully in place, they would be in violation of their parking.
Okay. All right, that's my.
All right, Counsel Sheldon.
Two questions, I guess, for you guys, for one of you two. Is there such thing as legalization of a nonconformity? Is that something you want to talk about tonight?
No.
Okay. My second question is, when did you find out about this new development?
I found out about it after the packet went out. Paul Workman is not here tonight. He may have known before that. I think it's entirely possible that he.
So the packets went out on the 14th, last Wednesday, so you found out about it sometime on Thursday or Friday?
Actually, I think it was Tuesday after 5:00, or something like that. So.
I might suggest we consider, I don't think what I'm about to suggest would put us in, put you, any of you in the audience in any jeopardy of losing what you have right now and being able to continue it. But I'm not really ready to continue this for eight months as I sit here right now. What I would propose, maybe we think about doing, is continuing it till our August 3rd, 6th, whatever our next meeting is. And just let you guys get your arms around this a little bit. It sounds like we have a lot of questions that you guys aren't ready to answer yet. And I appreciate that. You've had a hot minute to think about it.
And we can do that. I would just offer to you that the packet for the August 3rd meeting goes out, what, Wednesday? So just, I, my goal, and I've told Steve this, my goal is to have a meeting with Brave, Denver First, and city staff all together. And to allow us with schedules and everything else, and summer vacations and all of that, I would offer to you that August 3rd might be a bit rushed, but make no mistake, I appreciate and support the general approach. Just Denver 3rd, or August 3rd.
So maybe it's the second, maybe it's for our second meeting in August. But I don't, if it turns out that you guys come back to us and say, yeah, this really is going to take six or eight months to flush out whatever it is that we're not really talking about, the details, which I don't need to hear about all the details of these agreements. What's not, what we're not talking about today, I don't need to hear about it. But if we don't really need the six or eight months, whatever we're talking about, the request is for eight, I might suggest then the second meeting in August, and give staff a little bit of time to get it sorted through and get their questions answered. Bring it back to us. And even if we have to once again provide another two- or four-week extension after that, your applicant, your request for an extension, in my non-legal opinion, is still live and out there. You've still preserved your right. You haven't lost anything. You don't have a dead application at that point.
I think they passed the deadline for the extension, isn't that right?
No, because they made their request on May 28th, which was within their 90 days, or whatever that window was.
Yes.
We haven't granted it right now, but it's still up for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, they've applied. We can make a motion to reconsider, to consider this at a future date. That would be, that would be a perfectly appropriate motion.
Is it as easy as tabling this?
You don't table it. Table it means you don't talk about, it's actually be, continue to a future date certain. And that would be, if you're comfortable with the second meeting in August, is that, that would be the.
If we can get a commitment that we can get a meeting relatively quickly, you bet.
I'm happy. We could.
Let's continue discussion, though, before.
Yeah, I just want to say that's one, that's one option.
Mayor, while we're standing, what is the date of their closing? If you can answer that?
They did.
The date in the PSA?
24, I never heard of 25.
So Counsel Gallagher, I'll let you have your comments.
Yeah, just a general comment. I think communication is incredibly important. These parties have to be in the same room, and they have to do it quickly. And the fact that your pastor doesn't realize this is R4 is, it's really unfortunate that we're in that situation.
Sorry. We need to communicate well. We need to communicate fast. And it's really important that all these parties get together very quickly. And it is a surprise that your pastor does not understand that this is R4. Obviously, it's news to you, but it just shows the importance of good communication, and it needs to be done on a timely basis.
I couldn't agree more.
So I am in favor of just what you described.
Counsel Brown.
And I think to that point, Mike, I think it's news to everybody. I mean, I think the perception was that the whole thing was conditional upon these two elements, the good neighbor agreement and shared parking. And if one falls through, then the whole thing just reverts. Well, it turns out that's not the case, because, and I think we all just have to take a tiny bit of responsibility for creating this mess, because we approved them separately. We rezoned with no conditions, and then we considered the plat, and we put conditions on it that involve unknown third parties that neither we nor the applicant have any control over. And I believe that I brought that point up in our original conversation, which was that, you know, we, they can't commit to what Brave is going to do or not do, or any other party, for that matter.
But we put the burden on the applicant.
Yes, it was, and it still is. And I think that there are, there are many, I mean, this whole, I don't know, this whole thing makes perfect sense to me. I'm not as experienced in the real estate market, but just from buying a house. You go look at a house, you make an offer, oh, turns out, it doesn't meet something, or it's got, you know, some radon, or whatever it is. And it, you have to pull back and consider, and it can take forever to work those things out. So I do think it's going to take a lot of time. I don't think there's any rush to, because I think we all need to consider what the outcome of saying no is. The outcome of not granting an extension is that we now have R4 lots with nothing. They're not platted, they're not, you can't build houses on them, you can't, and somebody somewhere is going to have to, you know, pick up the ball and start over. And I don't think that's in anybody's best interest. Not the applicant, not Brave Church, not the city of Cherry Hills Village, or the neighbors, or the residents, or anyone. So I think, while I understand kind of the frustration with the cyclical roundabout nature of all of this, when you really get down to what's the best, what's in the best interest of everyone at this point, I think it's time to pause and really figure this out, and not rush people into trying to make commitments that frankly can't be delivered upon, which is sort of how we ended up here in the first place. So, you know, I think that there are, even in my own mind, I can think of 10 different possible outcomes. And it absolutely makes sense to me that you go start negotiations with someone, and they're like, you know what? That doesn't really work for us. But this would work. Okay, well, now that's a whole new, a whole new ball of wax. And I don't think there's, I don't see ill will in it. I don't see any bad faith. I just see it as a very complicated transaction evolving over time. And I would like to give everyone, including our staff, the time that's necessary. I am sure that everyone in this room is anxious to have it resolved as quickly as possible. So giving an eight-month extension, I don't think anybody in here still wants to be doing this in eight months. But I don't want to be forcing people, you know, to make decisions, and, which is kind of where we ended up. We moved forward down one path, and I fear that if we make too short of a deadline, we're going to force people to try a particular path that in the end may not work out. I'd like to give it plenty of time for the whole process to play out, so that we know what we're dealing with. And I absolutely, you know, if I were Brave Church, I absolutely would think that, you know, having, I might not be as interested in buying three and a half acres of R4 residential lots. But that doesn't mean that, you know, there can't be a deal struck with the other land, and maybe, I mean, there are so many possibilities. Let's just give them time to figure it out. That's my point.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counsel Wheel.
Well, I don't want to rush things and have a hasty decision, on the one hand. On the other hand, seems like it happened pretty quickly to write a purchase and sale agreement and a quick close relative to the writing of that. So it does feel to me like there's a lot of, there's capacity to focus and to get this resolved. And it seems to me that that's in the best interest of everybody, rather than have it potentially sitting in inboxes for weeks and weeks. So I'm, I don't want to be too short, but I don't want to be excessively long in the deliberation, at least from my personal perspective. Yeah, that's all I have.
Counsel Savaby.
You know, from my perspective, we listened to world-renowned parking experts to come and talk to us, and tell us why we could go along with less parking. We had a lot of discussion, conversation around that. And I think Counsel Sheldon summarized what I was thinking and what I said at the time. Summarized it nicely. I said, you know, I love to see those asphalt gets replaced. You know, it's asphalt, you know, replace and put, actually put some residential and, or turn it into a park or residential. And if we don't need the parking lot, we don't need to see asphalt. For one, you know, I was excited about the idea of the rezoning, because I was very supportive of it from day one, for a reason that, yeah, we create residential space for some additional folks that can move to Cherry Hills, call it home. And from city's perspective, you know, we do represent, and we want to, you know, that's something we better keep in mind, generating additional, if those turn into residencies, additional revenue for the city. So, you know, it was, it was, for me personally, it was exciting. It's a good thing. So, right now, the idea of now, for this transaction to take place, it needs to go back to become a parking lot. I personally don't like it. But it doesn't matter what I like or what I don't like. We've got to do what is, what is right. So I'm in favor of extension. I'm not expert to say if it needs two weeks' extension or two years' extension. So I leave that up to you guys to decide what is reasonable. But I would, I would say, you know, again, what I'm hearing and which I'm in favor, let's come to a conclusion, not conclusion, let's get all the facts straight. Let's come up with, you know, what kind of different options, A, B, C, we have. What is the city's, you know, the recommendations? Let's look at those sooner than later, and see what is the best way we want to proceed. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Savaby. I'll just add personally that I support the staff's recommendation, although I think the motion, I think continuing this to two weeks makes sense, too. And I would say, I don't see the city's interest really in imposing deadlines when there's, I agree with Counsel Brown, there's so many possibilities here, that for us imposing deadlines, when we don't really know what's going on, I don't, I'm not persuaded that the city has an interest in doing that right now. So I would, I would advocate pushing this into a, until the middle, second meeting in August to take another look at it. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel, or City Manager.
I know I said the August 17th meeting. Kathy and I were comparing calendars just offline, off to the side. I'm going to be off for a week. She's going to be off for three weeks and another, or three days and another week. Can I amend that and now say the, potentially the August 31st meeting?
Yes. That was something I was going to raise, because the September, our first meeting September is Rosh Hashanah. So I'm not going to have a meeting on Rosh Hashanah. But the 31st is open.
Will you just add in, please?
Yes, for Rosh Hashanah.
But as of now, there's nothing on that agenda.
Right. So we would add it.
So, you know, so the point is, if you're really conflicted, if you're really conflicted about whether.
Oh, you turned it off.
If you're really conflicted about whether to extend or not, but now we're pushing the decision about whether even to extend to the end of August, and maybe not even then, if that's, if that, you know, meeting doesn't have any business.
No, I think, I'm envisioning, you're envisioning two steps here, and maybe I'm totally misunderstanding. I think you're envisioning this extension till either August 17th or the 31st, and then at that meeting saying, okay, now we know what it is. We're going to provide a three month extension from here, or six, or eight, or whatever it is. I was envisioning trying to get it buttoned up by August 17th, or 31st, or whatever date we pick today. And if we don't get to that date on the 17th or 31st, in good faith, the people in this room look at each other and we say, we're not there yet. Staff reports back and says, we're not there yet. We need another two weeks. Let's postpone it till the.
So we have a request to extend. We either have to deny it, approve it kind of as requested, or approve it at some different length of time.
That's right.
And, or, the fourth option is that we could continue the whole discussion. So we are talking about two different things. Continuing would be continuing the whole discussion about whether or not to extend until later in August, which kind of has a similar effect. But then in August, or at whatever meeting, we would decide whether or not we're going to grant an extension.
I totally agree with you. They're two different things. I think it's.
And so I, my point was, if you're ready to make, if you're, you know, if you think we should extend it, then we should probably just extend it now, rather than dragging out the conversation about whether to extend it.
I'm not sure if I care if it's an extension or a continuance of this meeting. But what do you, procedurally, staff, what do you guys prefer?
I guess I don't really have a preference one way or the other. My bigger, my much bigger preference is probably just not the August 7th, whichever one you do.
No, 7th. If we agree to the 31st, which gives, which should give everyone six weeks to hopefully get some clarity to this issue and come back to us with a little bit better path forward, maybe even have the whole thing resolved, and you.
Well, the 31st has the advantage of being after their closing date document, too, which we may know a lot more about what might happen. So.
Well, my guess, well.
Who knows? All right.
I do have one other.
I'm sorry, Laura, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification, that I believe August 31st, we haven't spoken about that with all the council members.
Oh, we haven't formally set the meeting.
No.
Right. Just make sure we would have, actually have a quorum for that evening before we continue to that date certain.
I'm here.
I'm here. Anybody else here?
I'm not here.
Good point, Laura. Thank you.
I would like to add one more thing for discussion, though, that I think is important that I, we briefly talked about, I think it's, I think it's important to have Covington in these discussions, because I want to hear from the neighborhood. And it doesn't have to be 100% of them, but I would like to get some letters of support, or hear somebody show up at the council meeting or something, so that if and when we do this, which wouldn't require, well, we're not talking about the rezoning necessarily right this second, are we? We're talking about extension. Okay, well, for future notice, I think, I think you better prove up to us that the neighborhood is not going to come unglued again about keeping this now and as a parking lot, but that's for another day.
I think you'll see, you know, we have received two comments. That's not reflective, but their focus is kind of on other concerns.
Yep.
So, but I, to your point, I think it's well said, that there should certainly be an opportunity and outreach to say, okay.
I guess one more procedural question, then. If we, is there, does the applicant reserve its right to get a continuation, if that's the right word, or extension? If we get to August 31st, under either one of these two scenarios, whether we're providing a formal extension approval tonight, or we're.
Moving to continue.
Continue this topic, do either one of those paths limit them to getting another extension for two weeks or four weeks if necessary?
Get another one.
Okay.
All right. I'll, I'm going to shut down debate and see if there's a motion that somebody would like to make, so we can get on it. I think we've kind of reached a consensus, so I'm ready for a motion.
I'm going to try one here. I'm going to make, I'm going to move to approve Resolution 22, Series 21, approving an extension until August 31st, 2021, to a site plan amendment pertaining to parcels owned by Denver First Church of the Nazarene, and generally located at 3,800 East Hamden Avenue, and in the 3,500 block of South Monroe Street. at 3,800 East Hampton Avenue and in the 3,500 block of South Monroe Street.
With the conditions?
I don't think those conditions will apply because we're talking about a shared parking agreement by February 28th. That doesn't, that's not a condition. I think, Dan, are you saying you want, your motion is to extend, give, grant them the extension? From my perspective, I don't have enough knowledge to grant an extension, but I would like to see a continuation of discussion so we can get the answers from staff as to what we're really looking at. I don't know what the results is. We've got a zoned or unzoned property or SDP not approved?
One thing I know, I don't, I don't need, in, in my own mind, I don't need for this motion I just made, these two, these two conditions are not relevant. It's such a short period of time.
Well, well, can I just weigh in here? And Mayor, feel free to step into procedurally. But in my opinion, the motion to, to not extend, but to continue this discussion would toll this request and kind of keep things status quo until there's information available, not only to us who provide analysis in the meeting, but also to council, so that at that time, you know, you could have more information available to make a decision on the extension and to impose conditions that might be these or different depending on what we learn.
But I didn't think tolling it was actually a, a relevant issue because I asked the question, does either path grant us the ability to continue extending if necessary, whether it's continuance or an extension?
And, and when I answered that, I wasn't contemplating the impacts of the conditions. So I think if we did, if we continued it, we don't need to worry about the conditions tonight.
Okay. Well, then I would like to revise my motion. How do I, how do I kill it?
There's no, no, you don't need to because there's no second. So you, you may, you're, make a new motion.
Give it another try. So do I need to rescind that motion or do I have to read a new one?
Nope, nope. It was, it was a seconded.
So I would, I would move then to continue this topic. Is that adequate?
To a date certain of August 31st.
To, to August 31st, 2021. Second.
Period. Period.
I second that, Mark.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And this would be a voice vote for this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. All right. I hope that makes sense, everybody. Thank you for, thank you. Really appreciate you coming. We couldn't have done this without understanding a little more about what was going on. So thank you. And I know you'll be speaking with our, with our City Manager. We are now at Agenda Item 9C, Council Bill 7, Series 2021, amending the 2021 budget and approving a supplemental appropriation in the General Fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund for additional employee cost of living and merit increases and employee tuition reimbursement. This is a first reading. And Director Sager?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. During the 2021 budget process, several items were reduced or removed to assist with balancing the budget because of the effects of the pandemic weren't known at that time. After the first reading of the 2021 budget, City Council directed staff to review the city's financial status mid-year in 2021 to determine if expenses that were eliminated could be reconsidered at that time. Staff has performed a mid-year review and is projecting a year-end surplus in the General Fund of $478,000 and a year-end surplus in the Parks and Recreation Fund of $85,000. An item that was removed from the approved budget was merit increases for staff. The cost of living increase was also reduced from the 2.1% that was included in the approved 2020 budget to 1.5% to assist with balancing the budget. Staff is recommending a 0.5% merit increase for eligible employees as well as an additional 0.5% increase for cost of living for all employees. If approved, the increases would be retroactive to the beginning of July. Another item that was reduced from the approved 2021 budget was employee tuition reimbursement. The city's tuition reimbursement policy allows for reimbursement up to $10,000 per year per employee. Two employees submitted for tuition reimbursement in 2021. However, the line item for tuition was reduced from $20,000 to $10,000 to assist with balancing the budget. After discussing a possible increase in the tuition line item with both employees, it was determined they would need an increase of $3,850 total for 2021. If all expenditures are, are approved, the total increase to the General Fund will be $18,378 and the total increase to the Parks and Recreation Fund will be $3,273. Staff would recommend approving Council Bill 7, Series 2021 for approval. And before I answer any questions, we'd just like to say, we know that it was a challenging and difficult time for most people. We're so appreciative of the staff that we have and the, their continued flexibility throughout COVID, their dedication to the city and to the residents. Even with the obstacles 2020 presented, our staff showed great resolve in serving the residents with the high level of service that the residents have come to expect from us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Sager. That was a good presentation. Any questions?
I just think that it's well deserved. I think that the staff, I'm, I'm talking on behalf of every one of us here, that the staff is well deserving of this. And I think we need to unanimously approve this as soon as possible.
I'll just say ditto to that.
Well-
I move to approve Council Bill 7, Series 2021, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending the 2021 budget and approving a supplemental appropriation in the General Fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund for additional employee cost of living and merit increases and employee tuition reimbursement.
Second.
A motion, second. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, sorry.
Oh, sorry. This is a, this will be the first reading on the budget. Roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor Safabi?
Yes.
Councilor Weal?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilor Sheldon?
Yes.
Councilor Blum?
A definite yes.
That passes unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 9D, Council Bill 8, Series 2021, amending the budget for fiscal year 2021 by creating the American Rescue Plan Act Fund and allocating funds thereto. This is first reading as well. Director Sager?
As the mayor mentioned before you, tonight is Council Bill 8, Series 2021, amending the budget for fiscal year 2021 by creating the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Between 2021 and 2022, the city will receive just over $1.6 million from the United States government in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The ARPA funds can be used to mitigate COVID-19 efforts, replace lost revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The city has until December 31st, 2024 to obligate the funds and until December 31st, 2026 to expend the funds, which will allow City Council time to explore projects that will have the greatest impact to the village. Creating the American Rescue Plan Act Fund provides greater transparency for how the funds are spent as they will be tracked separately from the General Fund expenditures and will allow a more streamlined reporting to Treasury. We have to do reports once a year. So that'll allow, it'll make that easier with that process. Staff is recommending approval Council Bill 8, Series 2021, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Sager?
I do have one question. I think Chris and I talked about this. Chris, have you heard anything new about whether these can be used for not only broadband, but also for cell service?
Final, final rulings are, yeah, the comment period is not, has it closed?
It was on Friday.
It closed last week. So the final guidance is coming out?
They haven't provided a time period. They just, they collected responses until Friday.
So it's looking positive. And, you know, I, I did get some good information at a conference I was at that talked about if that is a possibility, you're going to have to have a plan in place, you know, a broadband plan to justify any funding that you get to spend. Yeah, another plan. The good news is, though, and that, this just, this just came out, that they will likely include the ability to pay for said plan with ARPA funding. So we won't have to pay for the plan to then meet the minimum requirements of, yeah, of said plan. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Director Sager or City Manager? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 8, Series 2021, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2021 by creating the American Rescue Plan Act Fund and allocating the funds thereto on first reading.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, please.
Councilor Safabi?
Yes.
Councilor Weal?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilor Sheldon?
Yes.
Councilor Blum?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to Agenda Item 9E, which is just informational item, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes. We have two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission whose terms are coming up in September. They both want to be reappointed. The current Board Commission and Committee policy allows them to, does not have a recruitment trigger because they're just finishing their first terms, Jennifer Miller and Britta Miles. So staff is just seeking any direction from council about that reappointment. Staff will bring back an official resolution for council's consideration at a future meeting, but wanted to just check base now.
So what's the sense of council?
Reappoint.
Okay. Sense of council?
Yep.
There you go. I think that's, that's the default generally.
Did I miss something? Do we have anyone else that's applied? Did I miss that?
Well, we don't solicit unless-
They're the second-
Unless, usually unless they're, if it's their first term and they want to continue, unless there's a real problem.
Sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
Okay. Is that satisfactory, Laura? Okay. All right. Mayor's report, I'll be quick. There's been, a lot of people have gone on vacation over July. But just to bring you up to speed, CML has annual meeting in June, and I, I was reelected, squeaked by, and I have another two-year term. I've also been appointed to the Budget Audit and Management Committee again for another term on, on CML Board. I also attended the SIRSIA Annual Meeting, which not a lot happened. It was by Zoom. But I, I do think, you know, for budget purposes, there's discussion about where the, where our liability insurance policy is going to go. And that's, they're doing that now. They're talking to their reinsurers and kind of, they explained that at the SIRSIA meeting. And, you know, we just need to be cognizant for next year's budget about how much that may increase because it could be, it could be substantial. It's hard, it's hard to know. SIRSIA is going to be negotiating that. On June 26th, we had John Mead Park opening. I wanted to thank staff for doing a great job. It was a beautiful day. And wow, the attendance I thought was extraordinary. It was just a, it was a all-around terrific day and terrific event. Commissioner Warren Gully was there. So she, our commissioner, she spoke. And I just want to, again, sincere thanks for making it look nice and putting it all together. That was very nice. And people had a great time. The, it's the, coming up is the Metro Mayor's Transportation Committee this Friday. I'll be attending that and see what, see what they're planning to do. There could be some information about what's going to happen with all the funding that Governor Polis assigned and the General Assembly has approved. So that's all really interesting. And as I mentioned, I, I'm going to cancel the Rosh Hashanah, the 9/7 meeting of council because that's Rosh Hashanah in our directions, our rules is not to have scheduled council meetings over holidays. So that's why we, we're looking at August 31st because August has, what, five Tuesdays? So this is just by chance. So the 31st, I think, works great if everybody can make it. Looks like we have a quorum. I just wanted to make sure. And, oh, August 1st, there's going to be the High Line Canal Conservancy is having its Walk the Canal thing. And you'll probably get invitations for that, too. That could be a, a neat event. And I did want to thank the chief and Commander Weathers for solving the burglary cases. Maybe on your report, you can tell us about those because those were very interesting. And I'd like to know, if you can tell us, whatever, you can tell us about the background of how those work. I, I did note there is a Board of Adjustment Appeals. Is that in our packet? Was that in our packet? Or it was? Oh, that's a consent agenda. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did have that call. So that's great. And you guys already interviewed that and that's taken care of. That's perfect. Okay, that's my report.
Mayor, just a couple of things. One is for Commander Weathers, I want to thank, have you thank Officer Sachs for resolving a noise issue at Glenmore. He stepped in and was very, very helpful on that. The second thing is, I've been getting some calls from constituents about e-bikes still trespassing. I guess we call them trespassing on the High Line. Are we doing anything to enforce the no e-bikes? I know there's one sign up at Hampton, but are we doing anything else, Emily, for signage on that? Or, and are we doing anything to enforce that?
Yes. So we have another sign going, either just one up or it's going up, at, on the High Line at the entrance at Bellevue also. And we're speaking with PTRC about the next kind of phase of e-bike signs on the High Line Canal. We're, we're talking to them about adding them at common entry points, so Quincy, Colorado, and more popular trails. And then the High Line Canal Wayfinding signs will be going in this fall also that also list rules within the city. So there will be more signage appearing. And then I'll hand it to the commander to talk about enforcement.
Yes, we're aware of the, of the complaints that, that come in from time to time. So have we done a lot of enforcement up there right now? Because we're waiting for some direction on, on the signage and wait for things like that. Once those are in place, then we'll make that part of our daily routine.
Thank you.
Councilor Sheldon?
Two quick things. I'd like an update on the Quincy undergrounding. I am frankly getting embarrassed that we have not seen a pole come down. And I know it's out of the city's hands, but it is our citizens that are asking for it. And it's our taxpayer money kind of in a roundabout sort of way from Excel that is paying for it. And we authorized it, I don't know when it was. It was last fall, late last summer. And it was supposed to be done by the end of the calendar year, I think. And then it was in the early parts of the year. And I know COVID's hit and I know we've been having trouble potholing and finding a correct route to put these sleeves in for all these lines to go underground. But I don't see anything going on out there. Rarely do I see stuff going on. So I am begging of our staff, and I know Jay's not here right this moment, but please pass on to Jay that, if nothing else, just an update to council so that we can let our own citizens know what's going on. Being that I live near, near there and come out onto Quincy every day, like a lot of us travel, that main lifeblood of the city, it's a little depressing to see, especially considering a lot of the work that they did out there, I think, has been mowed down and grown out. And all the, all the striping that they've done, the paint they've put down for all the locates. I mean, I don't, it, it looks like it's not, there's nothing happening. It looks like we've got an abandoned site out there. So staff, please report back to us pretty soon about what's going on there. My second thing is a request for building maintenance. We need to get the air conditioning working in here. There's no reason that we should not be having air conditioning, cranking out air to keep us at 70 degrees when we know we're having city council meetings. It's not 70 in here. It's like, anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Just a general comment on time capsules. I, I think of time capsules as things that go in the ground. And, and my comment is, I think that if someone were to say, you need to make, you need to vote today, I'd say, put it in the ground and put a very nice plaque on it. They're just, they're liability issues, they're maintenance issues, you know, if you put it inside somewhere. So that's all.
I would just echo Dan's comments. You know, I've been traveling a lot for the last two months, and I keep waiting for the day that I'm going to drive down. And all of a sudden, those poles are going to be gone. You know, a lot changes. It's when you're gone for weeks at a time, you come back and, you know, Target's open and, and I keep waiting for the day when I come home at the end of the week and the poles are gone.
Couple of things. The Board of Adjustment Appeals, we did have a resignation from Kerry Sullivan, the longtime chair. And I would like to go on record thanking him for his distinguished service. We were fortunate to find two candidates, one to replace the Kerry position, although not as chairman, but the VOAA position. And you had those in the consent, consent package, but would like to welcome Tom Smith and Walter Kelly and maybe a little thank you for Mike Gallagher for helping with, encourage Walter Kelly. So I think we've got two very strong additions to VOAA, which is great. Dr. Cog, we did not have a working committee, working session two weeks ago. There is a, a board meeting coming up tomorrow night. I think that maybe the topic of interest there would be the discussion of employee traffic reduction program. So I don't have, I haven't gone through the packet and up to date on that, but I'll get you up to date next meeting. And finally, thank you, Jay, in absentia. But if you would pass it on, Chris, the, the help that he's been giving us over at Cherry Hills Farm to work with CDOT, work with consultants to try and move the Traffic Island reconfiguration forward, very much appreciated. That's all I have.
No report, Mayor, except since everybody's making requests, I have a request. No report, Mayor, except since everybody's making requests, I have a request. Commander, you know, here's my request. On Hampden between Colorado and University, that stretch of two miles of road, one mile, whatever it is, it seems like we have almost like race car drivers, and it's not just in the morning, not just in afternoon. I mean, it is just what I consider craziness, and it's getting worse and worse. It is I cannot tell you if these people are going 70 miles an hour, 80 miles an hour. I don't know what it is, but but I'm glad their bricks are working because when they get to that red light, if one of them doesn't work, it probably take down five cars. I'm not exaggerating. It is beyond ridiculous. I would I would highly request or suggest, you know, we do, you know, to just put, I don't know, two police cars, three police cars, put the motorcycle there, and start panning out tickets left and right for a month, every day. We've got to do something to tell people to slow down there. I think we do a great job right across St. Mary's. There's always somebody that is there and there's a car pulled out pulled over. But on Hampden, I think we're doing a poor job, and every time I do want to make a turn out of our neighborhood, I do it with fear, just because although the road might be clear, but within a split of a second, I can have a car coming 60, 70 miles an hour from me because they just made a turn. So that's my only request, and I think whatever we do, we have to be consistent, and it has to be for a long period of time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, you know, half of Hampden is Denver, so, you know, only half is Cherry Hills Village, so.
Is that the reason that we don't see as many of our officers there then?
Well, I'll let the commander answer that if you want to.
Yeah, so all of from that stretch of the roadway, all westbound is in the city of Denver and then reverts back into part of Rappel County. We have the eastbound lanes. Now, my motorcycle team in the last two weeks had been out there on Wednesdays when we have the overlap and worked that pretty hard and had some success. We were quite a few tickets in the morning timeframe, but I agree with you, Councilman, that that stretch highway is is bad. It does have a lot of speed, and we can probably address some more enforcement towards that area.
I appreciate it. So I did not know that as part of it is Denver. Is this something that you can coordinate with the Denver Police to say, let's just go after this for a few weeks and let's just school's going to open up in about a month or so?
Yeah, certainly I can get ahold of their traffic, the commander of their traffic division, and see if we can do some team enforcement. We've had success with that before and some DUI enforcement we do at night through the years, and we can certainly give back with their staff and see if they're interested in in working a team enforcement with us.
Thank you, Commander Weathers. Staff reports.
I just have one report for council tonight. As you all are aware, we had two proposals submitted for the request for proposal for Quincy Farm, and so Cherry Hills Land Preserve and the Anderson family both submitted proposals. You should have a paper copy of both of those on your dais. You'll have access to electronic version that I think we sent out last week. Furthermore, I believe we're going to post both of those on the website as well, just in the spirit of transparency. When we started this process, there was some discussion about how to do the evaluation of these proposals, and at the time, council thought it would be best to wait and see what we got before we decided on what that process is. And now we know what we have. So, you know, council or staff is really looking for input on what process we should use. After talking with the mayor and mayor pro temp, you know, I think there's a desire to, you know, not overly rush into things with a process, but at the same time, keep things moving along. And so what I would recommend to council is that we contemplate some alternatives in the next couple of weeks, and on August 3rd, maybe we can finalize a process that we could use to evaluate these these proposals. Just to put some ideas on the table, you don't have to run with any of these. These are just some some thoughts that I had. You know, one option would be to set up, like we've done with some other projects, a committee with two council no more than two council members and staff. My advice to you would, I think, given the nature and the way council's been handling this project recently, I would recommend against that, but it it's an option should you so choose. Another option is to handle interviews, discussions, you know, I'm assuming that there's going to be an interviews. I'm assuming there's going to be discussion amongst council. I'm assuming there's going to be question and answer sessions. So assuming this with all of these scenarios. Another option is to do that a lot of those steps here in council meetings. The benefit of that is all of council's available, and it's already on a lot of your calendars. The downside is I hate for there to feel like there's folks in the audience that are waiting for other items, and you feel pressure to, especially with question and answers, to start, you know, oh, I don't want to go I don't want to go on too long. But anyway, another option to consider might be handling this similar to a council retreat where we notice the meeting, just like we would a council retreat, but we wouldn't necessarily be tied with other items on an agenda. We could have it, you know, in an afternoon or an early evening or some other night other than a council meeting, working with your calendars and the calendars of the two proposers. Again, still being very transparent, we could have that in here. We could probably videotape those. I'm assuming I said that without talking to staff, but I'm sure we could to make that, you know, so that the public could really check in on that and see what's, you know, see what the process is. Again, we are not requesting that you vote or decide on any of that tonight. I'm just putting those on the tables to sort of stir your imagination, but what we would request to keep this moving along is that maybe we could finalize the process next week if if that's what council desires. I'm sorry, what did I say? Next week? Yeah.
Next meeting.
Not next week. Yeah, yes. The packets due next week, but yeah. So August 3rd.
Perfect. I think that's a great thank you for that, and I do think, obviously, the input of the public isn't really important. I mean, we need to because there's a lot of interest, a lot of interest from neighbors, a lot of interest from a lot of people. So process needs to include all of them and get their get their views. Other directors' reports?
Briefly, we have the Great Sculpture Swap today, so I don't know if you noticed as you drove down Quincy, we replaced Really with Winsong III. So as you walk down to the executive session, if you take a look out the window, you should be able to see it.
And I just did some research during the council meeting. It's within the code that we are exempt from our permitting process, not within our policy. So I will check in with Kathy to make sure that we're covered, but just to address that movie night can fall outside of those hours and we'll still be okay.
Mayor, to address your what you had mentioned earlier, yes, we're very successful in getting the he's a serial burglar. He's hit us before about two years ago. We thought he was going to be put away into jail for a while. That wasn't the case. As soon as this guy comes back out, he does burglaries from Castle Rock all the way through to Fort Collins. Amazing. I mean, if you guys ever want to come and talk to him about this guy, it's he's incredible. But fortunately, with the relationships that we have with our fellow law enforcement agencies around us, we're able to collaborate, get this guy, get him and arrested. He's now in jail, and our district attorney is working on what they call is a habitual offender, which he should have been a long time ago, but they're working on that and trying to put all these cases together. There's probably well over 20 solid cases, and we have three of them, and have him put away for hopefully a long time because this is this I like to say I've been a police officer here for almost four decades, and he's truly one of the most prolific burglars, and his method of operation is very, very simple, but we're very glad that this worked out, and hopefully we can get a prosecutor to put this guy away for a long time. And then on a second note, the serial rapist that we had out here in 2019, I don't know if you heard, it was in the in the paper last week, he was able or the judge sentenced him to 136 years to life. And once again, this is probably one of the most dangerous criminals I've ever dealt with in my my year serving with Cherry Hills Village. This guy should never have been out on the street. Fortunately, we got a judge this time. He's not coming back out again, so he won't see daylight or come back to Cherry Hills, which is fine with me, so.
And I'd just like to recognize that our police department, there were quite a few stories on this, and a few of them did note that it was our police department who made the final capture that that allowed this judge to do this. So hats off to the entire department. Well done.
I think that I think the judge said he was the worst sociopath he's ever seen in his entire time on the bench. He was quite a quite a criminal. All right, any other, city clerk, city attorney, any report? No, but we do have executive session. We still need to go in that. I'm getting nods of the head. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive.
I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS Sections 24-6-4024B and 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and for receiving legal advice from the city attorney regarding the petition to vacate right-of-way abutting Three Crest Road, and upon conclusion of the executive session, reconvening to consider any possible motions.
Second, anybody?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Safavi?
Yes.
Counsel Wheel?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Gallagher?
Yes.
Counsel Sheldon?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
Okay, we will proceed into executive session back in executive session chambers. Yes.[1284.15] It is 8:56. We are back in session at the July 20th City Council Regular Session, and we've just emerged from executive session, and we now, I will entertain a motion from anyone on council to proceed in accordance with instructions from negotiators.
I move to instruct our negotiators to proceed as we discussed during the executive session.
Motion second. Any discussion? And can this be, this can be just a voice vote? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
So we have one no, but we have some ayes, so it passes. And negotiators, you have your instructions. That is the end of the executive session. It is now 8:57. We stand adjourned until the next meeting. Thank you, everybody.